Appreciate you coming. So we're going to go ahead, if everybody would stand, and we're going to do the pledge of allegiance on the flag and the prayer.
Will you join me in prayer? Most merciful God, bless your public servants in this county that we do our work in wisdom, humility, and compassion for the people of this county. Protect us and our neighbors from the danger of sickness and pandemic. Grant us your grace to work in civility. We pray in your most holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody can be seated. Okay, appreciate it. Okay, let's get the agenda started. Okay, the agenda before us is October 11th. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, council? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, let's do the minutes for September 27th. Council's had a chance to review the minutes on the 27th of September. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Next would be the dispersments of October 4th and the 11th. Council's had a chance to review that. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, got some exciting things with the town and Eastern Utilities. So, Mr. Hugh Grundon and John, you want to come on up? This is something we've been looking for years and you guys will get ready to pull it all for us, you know?
We are indeed. Well, good evening, President Callahan and members of the council. My name is Hugh Grundon. I'm the president and CEO of Eastern Utilities. And a couple of my colleagues here with me tonight. John Horner's our executive vice president, chief operating officer, and Kelly Simonson is our marketing communications manager. So I know it goes without saying, and you all know well, you don't tackle a project of this magnitude without a great team. And I'm really happy a couple of my colleagues could join us tonight. So, we are here this evening to thank you for the recent grant funding and provided just a very brief update on the Connect Talbot project. As you are aware, this project is transformational and it's an initiative to ensure all the unserved residents of Talbot County have access to broadband. So first and foremost, thank you. The grant funding you've provided for this project will help change lives. The residents of Talbot County are very fortunate inasmuch as all the residents of Talbot County will benefit from having equal access to broadband. Excuse me. In particular, this funding tranche tonight, combined with anticipated future state funding, will obviate the need for customer contribution, including the drops going to the homes. So again, that lowers the barrier to entry for many, many customers. And I think at the end of the day, at the end of the project, we'll all agree that all our citizens benefit it. You should have a one-page document in your advanced materials. It looks like this. It might be available on the screen, I am not certain. But we sent that in advance. I'm not going to read the words on the page, rather in a moment I'm going to see if you have any questions. It's meant to be a concise summary of some of the things we've done historically in this project, our next steps, and what we see for the future of this project.
We also have that map, too.
Yes, and on the backside, thank you, Mr. Callahan, there's a map showing the progress for the, for the project to date. As you can see, we're making substantial progress in various locations throughout the county. We're concurrently working in three separate regions of the county and making great headway in each one of those areas. To date, we've installed over 90 miles of fiber, which has provided access to over 575 locations. Our goal is to complete, our short-term goal is to complete 170 miles of fiber by July of 2023, which will give access to about 900 properties. I will hasten to add that as residents see Orange Conduit and other evidence of our construction efforts, we are in the early stages of building the entire system. Like a house, you have to construct the foundation first, followed by all the fit-out that takes place to make the house livable, in this case to have our system usable. As the system is ready to accommodate new users, we will reach out to the areas that are ready for sign-on and sign-up information. In the meantime, the latest information regarding the project can be found on our website, and that's www.eastonvelocity.com/ConnectTalbot. So you can go to the Eastern Utilities website or the Eastern Velocity website and you'll see a tab for a map and click on that. And again, that's the map that's shown on the back of your one-pager, and we'll update that as time goes on to give folks some idea of, you know, when they can anticipate being ready for service.
Real quick, can you tell us the white areas that aren't grid-marked, they're served by somebody else?
Yes, that's correct.
But they do, they do have service.
They do. With the funding that's been secured, Ms. Price, we've covered all unserved areas of Talbot County. Some exciting developments that we can talk about if you'd like, but there's, might be funding available for underserved, not just unserved, but underserved. So we're exploring that funding possibility as more funding comes out of the federal and state governments. So we'll keep in close contact with those entities that are distributing the funds, and we'll certainly update you if we're able to secure additional funding for other residents of the county.
One question. From an economic development standpoint, was this, how many new jobs were used for this project?
Well, I don't have a contractor count. We have a prime contractor and he has a number of subs, so I would think we could count those as, as jobs in this county. And then Eastern Utilities has added about a half a dozen folks to our organization. So I'd be happy to research that further and get back to you.
Could you, just from economic standpoint, to see how much this, this also impacted us from that, that vantage point as well?
Absolutely. And then, you know, there's, there's all the remote work that's going to be available to folks, but you know, I know you're just talking about employment opportunities. And I know the prime contractor and his subs have made a number of hires, and that's why we're able to work in three areas concurrently.
Now, were your hires, once the actual project is done, will those hires stay on board with you, do you believe? I'm sorry about that.
We anticipate that. As, as we have service calls out further in the county, it's going to take longer to service those customers. So, we talked about strategically not overstaffing, because the last thing we want to do is have a reduction in force at the end of the job, end of the project. I don't anticipate that, Mr. Pack. I anticipate that to keep the level of service our current customers and our future customers will expect, we're going to need that staffing. So I don't anticipate a reduction in force.
Good, excellent, thank you.
One more map question, I won't.
Sure.
Just using as an example, Tillman Island. How is it that currently, and I know it's served by somebody else, but why is there like a spot, like say in the middle of Tillman Island, or that's, that's not served, but everything kind of around it is?
I don't know why that particular parcel is not served when, as you said, areas around it are indicated as served.
Because we see that all throughout that Bay 100 area.
This mapping came from the federal government, and most of it was from the USDA and the Federal Communications Commission. One could argue that the granularity of that mapping leaves a bit to be desired. So what we did in partnership with, with you folks was look at the areas that were designated in the grant funding application as unserved, and just, and went after those areas. So I can't give you a cogent reason for, you know, why that one enclave is sitting there, but we thought it was advantageous to look at those enclaves, and that way, secure funding to get to those enclaves gives us opportunities in other areas.
If you don't mind, I'll just build on that real quick. The FCC does collect data from existing internet service providers on areas that they serve. So there is information that is received by the FCC, and they compile that to create maps showing areas that are supposedly served by existing internet service providers. So it, part of what you're seeing is, in the white, is areas that were declared as served by existing service providers.
Are they definitely served by, say, a fiber in the ground, or what, or aerial, or could they be satellite where they're just doing a?
So the answer to that question is, as far as the grant funding goes, satellite providers were eliminated, but they could be, they could actually have service from a Verizon DSL, from a fixed wireless land-based antenna, or from a coax or a fiber provider.
For the last 20 years, this has been an issue, Ms. Price. The self-reporting of areas covered by the companies leaves some opportunity for that data to be less than accurate.
So if it's not so great out there, and you're going and grabbing that little enclave in Tillman Island, or Sherwood, or Nevett, and the things around it eventually need better service or whatever, you're already going to be right there to start maybe branching out?
That would be our anticipation.
Okay, thank you.
That pretty much covers my notes, and again, thank you for your ongoing support. This has been a partnership with the county, and starting back in 2017, we answered an RFI, and it's been a great partnership. And for those of you who won't be returning to the council, I don't think I'll be back here before November. So thank you very, very much for your support and your confidence in our ability to get this job done, and we look forward to this continued partnership and bring this project to fruition.
Okay, I appreciate it. John, you good?
Good, thank you all very much.
Okay, Mr. Pack.
I'll let Mr. Lester comment first, and I'll go after him.
Okay, Mr. Lester.
Mine is just a thank you for, for what you are doing and the speed with which you are doing these installations. I've, I've been hearing from constituents who have been getting hooked up and, and are very excited about not only the timing, but also the quality of the surface from the day they are hooked up. So we really are improving lives in, in the county, and, and I'm hearing about it. Thank you.
Mr. Devilia?
It's been a goal of mine to make it possible to age in, in your home comfortably here in Talbot County, and this has been an excellent opportunity for individuals to work at home. And we've seen that, how important that was through COVID, as well as many people retiring and doing part-time consulting work back. It's an economic boom for the community, for the county, and I can't imagine a better partner. I greatly appreciate the services that I have received. I was one of those homes that was built out in an area that I didn't think I would ever have it, back in the woods with no satellite option or anything. And I was very fortunate to get hooked up to you guys, and the service has been phenomenal. It, I, it really made a difference in my kids' lives when we were doing schoolwork. And without it, it would have been a much more challenge. So I greatly appreciate what you've done for this community. You've really made a major impact.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Callahan. I just want to join and echo my colleagues that just said, expressed their thanks and gratitude to EUC. To have a partner like you right in county made this more rewarding. We didn't have to go outside and bring an outside vendor in. We already had an established entity in county that could, that could do the work. I know when I came here many years ago, this map looked vastly different than what it does right now. And one of the main things that we heard from Mitchell Water Realtors was we can't sell homes because people can't come here to work. Well, that's not the case now, you know, for, because of what you've done through your efforts, hopefully Mitchell Water Realtors won't have that issue selling those waterfront lots now and those other homes that are way back in the neck. So just want to say thank you for all that you've done. As you know, broadband was one of, one of the components of our comprehensive plan that we wanted to do, and to be sitting here this day to finally look at this map and say, wow, we finally did something on that comprehensive plan, it's very rewarding. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price?
I'll just echo, thank you very much for all, all the hard work, and I know how much the community appreciates it very much. Thanks.
Yep, and I'll say the same with my colleagues. It, it's a pleasure to be partners with you guys, the town, us, you guys. It's been a pleasure, you know? And John, you really helped me on the map, okay? Colorblind people can see this now, you know what I mean? That's for sure. So, we had this thing going on where, a year ago, I couldn't see any of the color, so he put stripes on it for people that need special help. Thank you.
That's precisely why we did it.
Exactly, exactly. So, that's chuck lines there, you know? So, anyway, I appreciate it. We've got, we've got the big check up here, so if you guys can come on up, that would be great. Next, next on the agenda is the Regional Medical Center project. Can you, you guys want to come on up? Yeah?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Members of the council, thank you so much for giving us a few minutes of your meeting time this evening, and I'd also like to turn and thank the town council for coming this evening as well. And Mayor, we appreciate you being here to hear some good news from the University of Maryland Shore Regional Health. But before I start, I just wanted to let the council know that October 3rd of this year was actually my 11-year anniversary as the president and CEO for University of Maryland Shore Regional Health. And there has been really no greater privilege I've had than serving this community in Talbot County and serving all counties of the mid-shore. It has truly been an honor, and I know we worked hard at trying to develop an integrated healthcare delivery system here on the shore. And what I'd like to share with you today is just a little bit about our journey and our vision that's leading us to tonight's announcement. So I only, despite Arvin Singh, who is our VP for Strategy and External Affairs, despite his request for me to put 80 slides up there, I've cut it down to just a handful, but we'll get through it.
We love him already.
But, but I thought it would be really important to share with you the journey that we've been on over the last few years. It will only take a few minutes, but it really, I think, as you hear the stories of how we've created innovative solutions to each county's healthcare needs, all of this has been predicated on building the regional medical center here in Easton. So I think, hopefully, it will put together the picture for you in a few minutes. And this journey that we've been on has really taken place since I've been here, but actually before I was here. So the first slide of two slides, just walk you through the timeline, that is Shore Regional Health. And for those that don't know, the University of Maryland Medical System and Shore Health formed that partnership back in 2006. And Chester River Health System, which was a separate healthcare system to our north in Kent and northern Queen Anne's County, joined the University of Maryland Medical System back in 2008. So during that time period, we were competitors in the same five-county region. But fast forward to 2013, and that's really the birth and launching of University of Maryland Shore Regional Health. And that's when we really had the vision to create a five-county integrated healthcare system that is really predicated on the regional medical center built here in Easton. And back then, we started talking about the regional medical center. We've had several conversations in this room about it, and some good, some moving in the forward direction, some taking a step backwards or two for, for a variety of different reasons. But all, I think, with this vision in mind. And as we launched from 2013, I think some of the highlights of the evolution of Shore Regional has been the purchase of our property in 2015, where the airport, near the airport site where the new hospital will be located. We also, in Queen Anne's County, developed the first emergency center that the state experienced. It was a pilot study back then. The emergency center now sees about 20,000 patients in that facility per year in Queen Anne's County. And when we complemented that with a medical office building and an urgent care center, it really provides comprehensive care for the Queen Anne's County community. But as you'll know, there are no inpatient bed facilities in Queen Anne's County, so Easton is the source for those inpatient bed referrals. As time went on, we looked at solutions in Caroline County. Caroline had a few different services that Shore Regional Health offered in different locations, mostly in Denton. But in the 2018 time period, we created a two-story medical office building there, centralized in Denton, and really providing primary care specialists and, and outpatient diagnostic services there. We complemented that with urgent care in Caroline County as well, and again, that's the second county with no inpatient beds, no hospital to say, but really, the Easton Regional Medical Center would be the solution for inpatient acute care needs in Caroline County. But that solution continues to exist today and provides the essential services needed for the Caroline County community. Fast forward to 2021, where we accomplished two things within the five-county region. On July 1st, we converted the hospital in Chestertown to Maryland's first Maryland Rural Hospital. There was a lot of conversations about what that hospital would look like and what services would be offered. And rather than create a freestanding medical facility in Kent County and Chestertown, we created the state's first Maryland Rural Hospital, which emulates the critical access hospitals that exist across the country. This solution was innovative because Maryland did not have a solution for rural healthcare in, in locations like Chestertown. The solution really also is complemented with an aging and wellness center of excellence. So again, providing the essential needed services within Kent County and Chestertown, and having those more acute care patients coming to Easton for the regional medical services that we offer here. But that solution in Chestertown was implemented on July 1st of last year. And as you get into the end, the fall of the year last year, we opened the freestanding medical facility in Cambridge and Dorchester County. That facility was the result of closing the hospital near the Chop Tank River, revitalizing the shopping center, and creating a medical facility that is state-of-the-art, and that provides the essential care and services needed in Dorchester and in Cambridge. And again, with those acute care patient needs being transferred here to Easton. So I share that journey with you because each puzzle piece that we've put together for each of the counties that we serve really are predicated now on building the new Easton Regional Medical Center. And now that those pieces are completed and in place, we approached the board of the University of Maryland Shore Regional Health and the University of Maryland Medical System over the summer and into this early fall, and with the intent of requesting the permission to proceed with, with the, the Easton Regional Medical Center project and pursuing the application and filing the application on the certificate of need with the state. And I am pleased to report that both the Shore Regional Health Board and the University of Maryland Medical System Board unanimously approved our request to proceed with the Easton Regional Medical Center. So it's, it's an important day for Shore Regional because not only do we have the project approved, but it is considered among the highest capital projects within the University of Maryland Medical System, and it takes among the highest priorities for completion. In addition to that, the, the additional steps that the UMS board approved is allowing us to file the letter of intent with the Maryland Healthcare Commission, and that filing date is November 4th. So we will file that letter with the Healthcare Commission, which basically announces that we are going to file a certificate of need in the, in the few months from that. And then we also received UMS board approval to file that certificate of need, and the date of that filing is January 6th, 2023. So those are specific dates that the state dictates. We would adhere to those dates and get the application ready for filing and submit it on that day. And in addition to those things, we also got approval from the UMS board to initiate the process for, for securing possible public and private funds for this project. So we'll initiate those conversations and start working with our federal, state, local, and philanthropic community for fundraising for this project. So an exciting time for Shore Regional Health with those approvals. We are now spending the next 90 days really completing that application process, making sure that it reflects not only today's needs within the five-county region that we serve, but also projecting what the future population growth is going to be like, what the aging of the population will look like, what the use rates of hospital inpatient care will be 10, 15, 20 years from now. And filling out that application with that essential information so we can build a hospital that meets the needs of this five-county region. So a lot of work to still be done over the next 90 days to get the application up to speed. We are still working on some of the specifics, like how many beds, what's the total cost, when do we anticipate building? But we do have the site picked out. The site is actually the property that we purchased from the county several years ago. It will serve as the home of the regional medical center for the mid-shore. For those that don't know, it's, it's on Route 50 heading eastbound with the entrance just past the Chesapeake, I'm sorry, the community center, the, the community center here in, in Easton. So that will be the entrance way. We own a couple of hundred acres just east of that property. So we are looking forward to completing the application, we're looking forward to initiating those conversations with fundraising efforts and, and having that application submitted on January 6th. What I thought I would also share with you, the second of two slides, is just a slide that shows the timeline for the actual project. Again, this is all tentative, there are some dates that are subject to change and out of our control, but for today's discussion, what you'll see on the far left, and we'll just go from far left to right, is that in the fall, we did receive approval from both Shore and UMS boards to proceed. In January of 2023, we will submit the CON application, that's the second of two milestones. And then from there, we are allowing about a year's timeframe for the state agencies, the Maryland Healthcare Commission and the Health Services Cost Review Commission, to respond and approve to our application. It's an iterative process, there'll be a lot of questions and answers going back and forth about size, scope, cost, et cetera. And that's why it's hard for us to, to nail down specifics today because it's an iterative process with the state, but we'll go through that over that year's period from the time the application submitted through calendar year 2023. And then at which point, once we receive the approvals from the state for this project, we'll then start the bidding process for the contractor, secure the bids and, and secure the permits for the building, enable the site for building on, and start the project really around the spring of 2025, anticipating about a three-year construction timeline that puts us into the spring of 2028. And then with a few months of enabling and getting the facility up and ready for use, we need about three months to do that. So we're looking about late summer 2028.
So you're going to need to invite quite a few former council members from the last three councils that have been working on this with you to come for that ribbon cutting.
Ms. Price, you're exactly right, and I think we'll have to really invite the entire mid-shore community, because how I wanted to end this was just, you know, this is a vision that we've had at Shore for a number of years now. We've been executing slowly but methodically on this vision, but honestly, we could not have done it without the support of each of the counties that I mentioned, and that's elected officials in each of those counties, that's business leaders, that's philanthropic leaders, that is, that is the community, getting the providers and the community's support for each phase of this journey that we've been on. And sitting here today in Talbot County, I realize the amount of time and effort and energy this community has placed on the new hospital here in Easton. And again, we could not be here without your support and without your advocacy for our efforts. So it's a great day for Shore, it's a great day for the University of Maryland Medical System on the mid-shore, it's the solution that we've been working towards for rural healthcare here in Maryland. It is innovative and it will set the tone for the rest of the country, which in many cases is closing down hospitals in rural America across the country. So we've got a great story to share. I'm pleased to share this part of the story with you tonight and hope that you'll allow me back as we continue to progress along those milestones and I can continue to give you updates along those lines. So with that, that's the bulk of our presentation. We have a few pictures here that we wanted to show you, just so you can visualize it. And honestly, the first time this really sunk in for me was when I started to look at these pictures and start, starting to visualize exactly what we're going to construct on this new site. So that's the exterior of the front entrance, this is the exterior of the back entrance where the emergency department will be located and where ambulances and EMS providers will come to drop off patients. This is the front lobby, an artist rendering of the front lobby, a little bit different than the lobby we have today in Easton. I think if you're 6'6", you're bumping your head on the ceiling, I don't think we'll have that problem here. Just another artist rendering of one of the inpatient units, where you'll see the nurses' stations, some of the patient rooms, and some of the amenities associated with the floor. And then the last picture is just a picture of the artist rendering of the patient room, all private rooms, all large enough for patients, families, and the equipment needed to successfully care for our patients. So just some pictures. We'll, we'll again, continue to provide you with updates here as you'll allow, and again, answer any questions you have about today's announcement.
Well, that, that's music to our ears, that's for sure. So, Mr. Lester, you want to start us off?
Yeah, thank, thank you for this presentation.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. Thank you and congratulations for this announcement. This is great news for all of us. This is great news for the whole community, and I look forward to working with you as we move forward and hearing all your updates as this project unfolds. I know that one of the challenges of rural health is recruiting doctors, nurses, technicians, your full staff. I presume that this will be one tool in your toolbox that will help attract that talent that you need to do, and is there anything that you want to, that you can elaborate on your recruiting efforts?
Sure, I'll just start with saying you presume correctly. I believe that this facility will attract providers, nurses, techs, everyone we need to support patient care in our healthcare facilities. So that is a tool in the toolbox that we have. But as I'm sure all of you have read and heard on the news across the country, staffing healthcare facilities is an incredible challenge nationwide and in Maryland and in rural Maryland. But some of the things we benefit from are being a partner of a member organization of the University of Maryland Medical System. We have a $5 billion organization behind us recruiting our providers for the shore here in tandem, working together to do that. And in addition to that, we've got local partners with Chesapeake College and other partners like that who teach the workforce of tomorrow and who allow us to be the facility where their students come in to rotate and learn how to provide state-of-the-art healthcare. So a number of tactics, tools in our toolbox, but really, I think, having this Easton Regional Medical Center would be a valuable tool to recruit and retain existing staff, along with the other things that we're working on that I just mentioned.
Mr. DeVilio?
Well, as someone who grew up in the hospital, with my father being an ER surgeon there, I've seen the changes that you've gone through, and I recognize the challenge that this community poses with the population that we have. I'm always amazed when you see people on Facebook complain about the level of care that they're receiving, and I'm like, you do realize that was probably from a nurse that lives in your neighborhood, you know? Same thing with the doctors that live around here. We are fortunate for the area that we have that it attracts individuals, and when there's questions in the air about what's going on, it does raise concerns and it just doesn't help morale. You've answered some of those tonight, and I'm looking forward to the success of that, of letting everyone know what the timeline is. When you have a new facility with new technology, that's the best care that we can provide. And I'm thankful for the, that we have a group here that is willing to invest in us and protect us. I've seen what you've done in the other surrounding counties, and I recognize the challenge of what Chestertown was. I remember the discussions on mental health and where we could fit different rooms and when we had the discussion that those weren't crisis individuals that could ride in a car for an hour and a half. That's not the same thing with somebody having an emergency with a birth or in a bad accident. So you have, I think you've done an excellent job with the rural care that can be provided here in the different facilities, just like we had with the broadband discussion. There's many, many challenges in this area, and you guys have worked very hard through all of those to make sure that we're safe, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, sir, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the partners that you just mentioned as being partners with us in providing healthcare. You know, Easton Utilities and the broadband capabilities of providing telemedicine is critical for, as a strategy for rural healthcare and for Shore Regional Health. Katie Dilly's in the room tonight, and you're gonna hear from Katie, and our partnership with the mental health services and behavioral health services has filled a critical need for our community. Still a long way to go, but it's those partnerships that help us thrive as your healthcare system. And yes, we have challenges. I'll admit to that, but we are really focusing on being a high reliability organization that promotes a goal of zero harm to anyone that we treat and that promotes the best patient experience we can possibly get. That's our vision, that's what we're striving for. In addition to the bricks and mortar conversation that we're having, that's equally important to support that holistic level of care that we need to provide. So it's an exciting time, and again, we couldn't do it without our community partners, and that's up and down all five counties of the mid-shore.
Okay. Mr. Pack?
Excited is a good word. Elated, overjoyed, overcome, happy, delirious. It's been a long time, and as you know, the meetings that Mayor Willie and I and yourself, there were times we left those meetings and, you know, with head hung low, not thinking that this day was actually gonna happen, at least not during my tenure here on the council. You know, I always had the hope that this day would come, but while I would be here to see it face-to-face with you, I was beginning to wane on whether that was gonna happen. Hearing that the full UMS Board, this is a new board, and I want to give credit to what credit is due, you all did some great work down here in bringing those new board members down, showing them the grounds, taking them through the town, allowing them to actually not just see it on a board or on a slide presentation, but actually see it up close. I think that should be noted as well because you worked hard to make sure that they understood what this regional hospital is gonna mean to this area. And to get a unanimous vote out of 14 members?
Maybe north of 20.
Maybe north of 20, so, you know, come on, you know? You can't get three people to vote on lunch these days. So I just want to just note that, that you all worked very hard on making sure that that board was educated, educated on what this project is and what it means to this area moving forward. A lot more work yet to be done, you know? It now goes up to the MHCC, of course, they have to go through every review process, and that may take, as you saw in your timeline, some time to get back and then send, do your edits and go back up to them. But, you know, I'm ready to put the shovel in the ground today, just let me know. So thank you very much for coming and sharing this great, wonderful news with us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Pack, and thank you for acknowledging the UMS Board who did make the journey here on the shore. A number of them did. About a third of the UMS Board came down to see our organization firsthand. And to a person who came, they felt the pride that we see, they felt the pride that we have when we care for our patients, but they recognized the facility needs very quickly. And they recognized our efforts and the journey that we've been on and how it needs to culminate with this regional medical center. And I'll also add that we have no greater advocate here on the shore than Dr. Mohan Suntar, our CEO for the University of Maryland Medical System. Dr. Suntar has been an advocate for our journey, for our vision, and has really helped us execute on that vision. So proud to work with him, and I'm grateful for the UMS Board's unanimous support. But Corey, to your point about us meeting, you know, I appreciate the time and energy that you and Mayor Willie have shared with me over the last many years. And you're right, there have been some tough conversations to have, but to a conversation, we've been transparent, we've been honest with each other and open, and I appreciate the professional relationship that we've developed over the years and the personal relationship that we have. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price?
The hard part about going after my colleagues have spoken so eloquently is, you know, something different. So I'm gonna agree with, you know, all of what they've said. You just mentioned the personal relationships. That's big, too. I mean, we work together in a professional manner, and yes, you know, Corey would come back and he'd be giving us the updates, and it was, you know, it was frustrating, and I think it, but it was no more frustrating. You were probably the most frustrated of all because you're the head of this organization, and you're, you know, kind of your name was on the line, and, you know, you got it, you get it done. Hopefully, everything will go smooth with the MHCC and all of that next year. But getting to know you and having that relationship, and I think one of the things that was really neat, and it's a long, many, many years ago now, maybe close to 10 years ago, was the DRRA that was a trifecta. I mean, getting three people to agree for lunch? I mean, we had to get, you know, the town of Easton, us, and, you know, Shore Regional Health to agree on this DRRA, which was, you know, very, very thick document. And I remember when that got signed and how big that was, and then I also remember when y'all came in here and, you know, when you purchased the property, which was another big milestone, and then we had stumbling blocks after that. But there still has always been, for every step back, there's always been at least a step and a half forward. And I'm, you know, very grateful that here about six weeks or so before, you know, Mr. Pack and I, who were here when this first started, you know, that we can actually see not the completion, but at least now the light at the end of the tunnel. So thank you very much for everything that you've done, and I'm, I know you're gonna invite the whole community, but I certainly hope that we get a few special invitations for the Easton Town Council former members and Talbot County Council former members who really were a part of that, beginning of that process, because it's gonna be really, really very, very cool to see when that shiny new building goes up.
Thank you, and I'll make sure with Arvin's help that we'll invite you and give special invitations.
You may have to hunt us down to find us, but, you know.
We will find you. And thank you, though, over the years, Laura, for your questions. They were insightful, they were hard-hitting at times, but appropriate, and you held us accountable, and I really appreciate that, and I appreciate working with you as well. So thank you and good luck.
Well, Arvin and Ken, you've made a whole community happy. And not only that, counties, the surrounding counties. So what you've done tonight is really relieved a lot of people. You're gonna be generating jobs, generating trust, generating future health here in the community. So what you've done and what you've created in the last 10 years is worth it. And I want to say with my colleagues, we wouldn't be at this point if it wasn't for the town, too. So the town's right behind you, Megan, and the council behind you. I really would love for you to have words, each one of you, if you want to please stand up and say something, be glad to have you, say anything, because you guys are a big deal, too, okay? So we wouldn't be here without you. I wish the mayor was here, because I was gonna, I was gonna pat him on the back, but I don't know why he left. But, you know, I want somebody from the town, you know, to at least say something. You sure?
Sure. If you're pretty pleased, Ken, this is a great announcement. We're happy to be here.
They can't get you on the camera, Miss.
Sorry. And we're very happy for tonight's announcement, for not only the citizens, but the town of Easton and for the surrounding counties. As Ms. Price mentioned, you know, we've been working on this for a number of years. As a board for councilmen, we have a new council, we've all worked, and we're all cheering you on, and we're very happy for tonight's announcement.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, council. Thanks for everything you've done for us, too. So this really couldn't happen unless the whole team was together and on the same field. It just couldn't happen. So Ken, you've really relieved us a little bit here, you know, because it was getting higher and higher. The level of anticipation was getting higher and higher, and we really thank you. And I want to, I want to thank staff. Staff did a lot of work through the years on this, too. So are you gonna take all the glory for it?
We're very excited with you. I did want to mention to you that Mayor Willie did say that he had another appointment.
I got you.
He was pressed, and so he probably had to go out to attend that, so.
Okay, all right, good, good. Cassandra, this is a big part of you, too, is bringing economic development and tourism. That's gonna, that's gonna be huge, so. Everybody has a hand in it, so we really appreciate it. So I don't know if we need to come up here and take a picture and, or what?
A check.
We got a big check? It's only?
Not for you, not for this one.
Exactly.
Oh, I'm not sure we could get a big enough check in here. How about we hold the picture for when we actually file the CON?
That's perfect. That's perfect. Okay.
Well, thank you for your time this evening. Thank you for the love that we feel in the room, in the community, and we've got a lot of work to do yet. Make no mistake, a lot of work to do.
I appreciate it. We don't get many stand-ups here, so enjoy it. Okay, enjoy it. Thank you, council. I appreciate you coming. The next one is another big deal. It's proclamation. Al, you want to come on up here, the 100th anniversary of the Avalon? Secretary, you want to go ahead and read the proclamation to the record? That'd be great.
I'd consider. Who wears their?
Yeah.
Black.
Council's commendation to the Avalon Theater in recognition of the outstanding contributions to the citizens of and visitors to the town of Easton and Talbot County and the surrounding area as a movie theater, center for arts and entertainment, and cultural hub for the past 100 years, and further in recognition of the mission of the Avalon Foundation to foster a strong community on the eastern shore by creating accessible, uplifting arts, education, and cultural experiences that appeal to the interest of a diverse population and to ensure the long-term viability of the historic Avalon Theater, given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this 11th day of October in the year of our Lord 2022.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion, a second, to approve the proclamation?
Sure, move.
Second. Okay, we got a motion, second, to approve. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
I want to yield to Mr. Barnes, since he's here, to tell us about this and their plans.
Sure. No, if you think about the Avalon Theater and its history and its, what it was built for, it has been about convening community the entire time that it has existed, from the time when it was a vaudeville house and silent movie house, and certainly when you think about the mission of the, who just read out there, the Avalon is fundamentally about bringing our community together. And so that building is incredibly important to the work that we do, and obviously, it's very much associated with the live performance that we facilitate. But our mission is so much greater than that, yeah? And I think that the notion of bringing our community together, if you think about the work that we do right in this room, in fact, you know, MCTV, especially for those of you who are watching at home, you wouldn't be doing it without the Avalon making sure that those, you know, council meetings get, you know, get recorded, and we have a lot of partners. We're, you know, we are supported by the county to make a lot of our MCTV programming possible. The town of Easton, we've talked about Easton Utilities in all the great ways, they have been enormous supporters of the Avalon, yeah, through, you know, the years. But those partnerships extend much, much further than that. Yeah, we work with Cassandra, yeah, in both her tourism and economic development capacities. We, yeah, found ourselves in the odd position of working with the Talbot County Health Department just a few years ago, yeah, helping with vaccination appointments. So, yeah, we work with the EMS folks in Talbot County. Again, there are so many ways that, yeah, we have, yeah, offered the resources that we have in order to bring our community together, and a lot of that work happens, yeah, through partnership with various parts of Talbot County government. So just wanted to take a moment and thank you for your ongoing support and point out the various ways that, yeah, our work gets done because of those strong, yeah, relationships and partnerships. So I want to thank you all.
Thank you, Al.
Well, Al, I want to thank you. Congratulations to you and your wonderful staff that you have with you here in the back row for reaching this historic point. And you have been a partner to this council. A few years back, when we had to take this show on the road and go up to the community center, you all were there running wires along the four and figuring it out. When we had to go do our budget meetings over at the high school, you guys are there trying to figure it out. When we had to go across the street to the library, again, you're there trying to figure it out. So you have truly been a partner with us over the years when we had to be more mobile, and you guys have been there. You've been a pleasure to work with. You figure out the details, how to get it done, to make sure that the people of Talbot County can hear the message that is being sent. So thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Wonderful partnership. I'm old enough to remember when the Avalon Theater was the old movie house, and I still can't figure out where the back wall used to end.
I saw Star Wars there, so we're right there.
Absolutely. You know, I was in there the other night when you were having your candidate form, because I couldn't keep myself away, and just looking, you know, as I was listening to the candidates, just looking around and really just soaking in, you know, the beauty of that theater and how you've been able to maintain that and not lose its character, which is what, of course, we try to do in the county, is not lose our character. And the Avalon Theater, I believe, you know, embodies being able to do that and just, you know, obviously wonderful shows. I had held a couple of pageants there a couple of times, and, you know, Susie and Tim were wonderful to work with, so it's been neat to be able to work with. wonderful to work with, so it's been neat to be able to work with you all from that end, where I was, you know, helping produce a show, to see how wonderful and professional the staff there is, and how all the inner workings are. So I mean, you just do everything there, in addition to, you know, everything you do with our council meetings. So congratulations on this very impressive milestone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Mr. DeVilio.
Over 100 years, that's amazing, and you have changed, the Avalon has changed a lot in those 100 years, seen many different styles and uses in there, and as I told you during the celebration, it means a lot to many different people, it means something totally different. My mother's experience, when she went to the movie theater there, was very different than when my brother went to the Star Wars movie there.
Sure.
And it adjusted much better for the change with the times, and I remember for me, Rusted Root was my favorite concert that I've seen there, but it was also the gateway for Broadway to me, and to think that, you know, me, a kid from Easton, would enjoy the theater, I wouldn't have had that opportunity to even think about Broadway, had it not been for local theaters like the Avalon, putting on such excellent presentations that really balled me into it. So I greatly appreciate all that you do for the children, all the way through the retirees. You provide a great outlet for entertainment for all of those, as well as an opportunity for them to experience that. And, you know, not everybody's into sports, not everybody's into music, some people enjoy acting and enjoy the arts, and it just shows how well the community can work together, and how much we all do mesh together, even when it's a person like me behind the scenes that is a Broadway guy who loves Rusted Root and loves the Avalon for both of those things. So I appreciate all that you do, and all the acts that you bring in, it really shows a community hub.
Thanks, Mr. DeVilio. Mr. Lesher?
You know, 100 years on, the Avalon Theater is still a really beautiful space, but what really makes it special are the people, the people that you bring to this community, the people that you hire, and staff in the theater that make it possible for all that programming to go on, and the community that you bring together. You are an anchor for this community, and that's what really makes this such an important occasion. Thank you for all you're doing.
You're welcome.
Like my colleague said, Al, you've been on the 100-year tour all year long, you work so hard, you know, you work hard, you know, I've been to a few functions and it been fantastic, you know, so I can't thank you, like Mr. Lesher said, all the people involved, so you've done a great job, and we're proud of you, and all the people that put this together all year long, that's for sure. So, thanks a lot, we've got something for you.
Are you expanding your footprint with the restaurant, is that... So that is actually, in the interest of carrying the good news along, yeah, it seems like it's been a good news meeting you're having here, yeah, the Avalon successfully purchased the last part of the building about a month ago.
Wow.
So, yeah, most people don't realize, it is a commercial condominium, there's about seven units in that building, and when I first started at the Avalon, we didn't own enough of the building to have a vote in the condominium association, but everybody thought all the problems were ours. And so, so we decided that if everybody thought it, maybe we should make them all ours, and yeah, take on and really be sort of responsible stewards. That is a building that has been loved by a lot of people over that 100 years, and we're just one step along in that progression. So yes, in September, we bought the Banning's Tavern space, and so we own 100% of the footprint of the building. Our plans right now are really to do a little listening, we are a community organization, we take that very seriously, and so before we make any final decisions about how that space gets used, we're talking to, you know, community members, we're talking to people that have specific background in food service, because obviously there's a commercial kitchen in there, and, yeah, we're really thinking through how it fits into our master plan, which we're in the process of doing the next round of, so it's a, the timing couldn't be more perfect, not only that we're celebrating 100, and we've put the whole thing back together again, but also in the forward-looking sense of, you know, we're in a process where, you know, we successfully made it through a very difficult few years, and we are looking forward about how we're going to serve the community better, and, you know, how we integrate that in, yeah, it's a perfect moment, you know, up until a few weeks ago, it was a privately-owned property with a going concern business in it, and it really wouldn't have been appropriate for us to go, you know, talking to the larger community about how it should be best used. Now is the first time in our whole, you know, this whole process of assembling, that we can actually have that conversation, so we're pretty excited about it.
Well, congratulations on making that a concession.
Thank you.
That's great. Mr. Lesher, you want to go ahead and present the proclamation, that'd be great.
Yeah. Do you think you can let go for a second?
I'll be there, yeah.
Are we going around the room?
Yeah.
Are we going around the room?
Yeah.
She's going, she's going.
Come on, she's got no blind shot.
She's going to get the camera.
We need to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, I can't see Laura. Laura, get in the window, come on. There we go. Got it, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations to you.
Okay, all right, next on the agenda is a presentation of a proposal of KIA Memorial Bench. Ms. Gooding and Mrs. Blades, you want to come on up? They're from the VFW Post 5118 auxiliary, and they're going to put a proposal that they would like to put a bench on the courthouse.
Lawn.
On the what?
On the courthouse lawn.
Lawn, yep, yep, yep. I forgot to mention it.
Have you had a chance to see?
Yes, ma'am, we have, I think we have, yes, ma'am.
So there really isn't much more to say.
Okay.
We really wanted to combine this, bring together the Vietnam Memorial with the other one.
Okay.
And the use that are blocking that will be taken out, and the smaller inkberry-type shrubs that are flanking our memorial.
Right.
Our memorial, our towns memorial, county memorial, there's a similar group of three inkberries on one side of the Vietnam Memorial, so where the use will come out, we'll put three more that we'll be paying for.
Got you.
And Brian Moore said that this is really not much more than general maintenance, to pull those out, put the new ones in, nothing has to be done in terms of moving, you know, water systems or anything like that, it's pretty straightforward, there just has to be a little bit of minor grading to make the bench sit there straight, and that's really it.
Miss Blades, you want to say something?
No, I'd just like to see the memorials connected.
Yep.
That's their connection.
Exactly, so what we've got in front of us that people can't see, we've got like a little bench here, it's about five foot long, is it granite?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a little granite bench that people can sit there and just, you know, take a rest and read the names and that kind of stuff, so it looks great to me. Council, Mr. DeVilio, you want to say something?
I'd like to thank you for doing the work, the heavy lift of this. Obviously, our veterans are getting older, and when they go to see these sites, it's important that they have a spot where they can sit and rest and commemorate them. So you've raised all the money yourself, thank you, you've spoken with the county staff, the facilities maintenance director, Brian Moore, to make sure that the site would work, you have gone out and received the renderings of the granite bench, backless bench, again, backless, so it's not going to impede any view of anyone. I appreciate you having done the work for this, and being part of the VFW, I certainly recognize the importance that you have found in this, and I'm sure that your members are interested in doing this, and have supported you with it. So I'd be willing to make a motion to approve this request.
Okay, so, yeah, a little bit more discussion, is it okay? I just want to make sure that we, it's a motion, a second, to go ahead and proceed and contacting the town of Easton Historical District Commission for review and proposal.
Right, that, that's a safe place as well, but I think the idea is a very good one, place the bench there so people can sit there and rest, and again, it's not anything that's going to be obtrusive in any way, as far as blackening anyone's view or getting in the way, so it's very appropriate in my opinion.
Ms. Price?
Sounds like a wonderful idea, you did a beautiful job on the other memorial, and you know, this just makes sense to pull it all together, so thank you for all that.
Thank you. Mr. Lesher?
You know, the courthouse lawn is effectively heavily used downtown park, and people enjoy this, and of course, this is the opportunity, this is why it is such an appropriate place for the memorial, but adding this bench, of course, it is both important in further emphasizing the memorial nature of this, but also it adds a very good park amenity there too, it functions in two ways. So thank you for bringing this forward, and I'll certainly support seeing this take the next step of review with the Historic District Commission.
Thank you, I just wanted to add one more thing, as far as tying the two together. There were a couple of times when we were at the memorial, and a couple of times people would say, well, that was, that's all well and good, but how about Vietnam? And we said, it's right there.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Some of the landscaping was obstructing the view of the Vietnam one, so we're pretty excited about having it all pulled together.
Well, that's great, that's great, you guys have done a good job with all of that, so, okay, council, was there, there was a motion, is there a second? Okay, there's a motion, second, to go ahead and move it to the town of Easton Historical District Commission to review the proposed bench. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
There you go, good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So do we go to the historical commission?
Yep, yep.
With this?
With that, yep, yep.
They're closed right now, but...
Not at 7:00.
Yep, you've got the green light.
We go through the same process we did.
Go to the next step, you're great, yep, we're good.
They have an application that you'll have to fill out.
We're familiar with that.
No problem.
Thank you, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next up is the public hearing, okay, we're just, we're closed, but we're way off here, it's supposed to be 6:30, but we'll get there. All right, resolution, 335, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
Resolution number 335, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 4480 Bachelor's Point Road, Oxford, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 53 as parcel 77, from W2 and S2 to W1 and S1, immediate priority status for water and sewer service from the Oxford Water and Waste Water System.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Clark, Mr. Thomas?
How you doing? This council, President Callahan, resolution 335, the, sorry, it's a little close, the Public Surveillance Board met on September 15th, and via a 5 to 0 vote, recommended that the county council adopt resolution 335, and just to remind, I guess, the council as well, if you adopt this resolution, it will be pending M D E approval, so just want to let you all know that.
All right, that's good.
And on October 5th, the Planning Commission held their regular meeting and voted to find resolution 335, consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan and the seven standards required by COMAR under Article 9-506, and that vote passed 4 to 0 with one member being absent.
Okay, great, you want to add anything?
I don't have anything further to add.
Okay, so being that said, this is a public hearing, so do we want to go ahead and open this, or do we, okay? So I'm going to open the public hearing, give three minutes to the individual, five minutes to if you're supporting an organization, I will close the hearing when that is over. So, on this side of my left, is there anybody that wants to come up and talk about 335? Yes, come on, I've seen you back there.
Hi, Cheryl Lewis, town manager of Oxford, how's everybody doing?
Okay.
Really just wanted to be here in case you had questions, it's a real simple request we're making here, we have a home in town that has been on water and septic for a very long time, and we're very excited to have them extending our services to them and removing the last property within our incorporated boundary.
I got you, that's great, okay Cheryl, thanks a lot.
If you have questions, I'm here.
Okay, great, no problem, appreciate that. On my right here, would anybody like to talk about 335? Okay, okay, at this time, I guess, do we want to close, closer, or do we want to keep that open, Madam Secretary?
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Okay, so there's no reason to keep it open, so let's go ahead and close the public hearing?
So is it, are we, are we okay, Al, go ahead and vote? I'll move to second. You read twice. You can move it to vote.
Okay, we can move it to vote.
All right, do I have a motion to move resolution 335 to a vote?
I don't think you need a motion, Ms. Callahan, correct me wrong, Mr. Thomas, can I, as a chair, can you just move this to vote now, tonight? Or does it have to be moved to vote?
I would, I would move it to vote.
Okay, I'll make the motion, move it to vote.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion to move it to vote, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, so, Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, council, appreciate it. Okay, next up is resolution 336, so if you guys want to come on up, and we'll do that one.
Resolution number 336, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Project for fiscal years 2023 and 2024, to add a new capital project in the amount of $4.718 million for water system improvements for the town of Oxford.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan, on this resolution, resolution 336, we did receive the application from the town of Oxford, primarily just for you as well as the audience, typically when you're going for funding through the Maryland Department of the Environment, you have to amend the comp water and sewer plan, so this is adding to this as a capital project for the town for the water system. Ultimately, the, again, on September 15th, the Public Surveillance Board reviewed the application, and then passed a motion 5 to 0 recommending the county council adopt resolution 336.
Okay.
And on October 5th, the Planning Commission reviewed the resolution and found it consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan, as well as the seven standards required under COMAR Article 9-506, that vote passed via 4 0 with one member being absent.
Okay, great, Mr. Thomas, you want to add anything, or you good?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good, okay, so at this time, it's open to a public hearing, so I'm going to give individuals three minutes, I'm going to give five minutes to anybody that was representing an organization, so anybody here on my left, Cheryl, if you want to come on up and comment on 336.
Cheryl Lewis, town manager, town of Oxford, and again, this is really an administrative move for us, we've received funding from USDA to do this project, it is a multitude of improvements to the water system, as many of you know, we just did a very large improvement to the wastewater, so this is kind of bringing all of our infrastructure.
Okay, that's great, well, good job down there with all that, too.
Ms. Lewis, I just want to thank you for showing up from the town of
Ms. Lewis, I just want to thank you for showing up from the town of Oxford to be here. If we had any questions, that doesn't always happen with some of the municipalities, we all get busy, we understand, especially on perfunctory looking things like this.
And I want you to know why we're not usually here. We usually try to catch you, but this is our meeting time, so we canceled our meeting in order to have someone present for this purpose.
We appreciate it.
It's not that we don't want to share time with you, we just have the same meeting nights.
Certainly, I understand. I also want to thank you for not using all five minutes.
Oh, 30 seconds, that's all.
Exactly.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. Okay, anybody here on the right side want to comment on 336? Okay, that being said, we'll go ahead. Madam Secretary, assuming this is eligible for vote, too, because it's been read a couple times, okay? So why don't we go ahead at this time and go ahead and vote to?
Well, I think it's the same where you set the fire.
Same process.
So I would make the sense, this is a numbered resolution, has been read a second time, Ms. Callahan, I'll make the motion that we move it to vote tonight.
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. Okay, is there a motion, second, to go ahead and vote?
So just call the roll on 336, then.
Okay.
334.
336.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. Okay, that's great. Thank you, Cheryl, appreciate it. Okay, also, okay, we'll move on to what is eligible for vote tonight is, I think we, is 334.
Resolution number 334, a resolution to amend resolution number 175, a resolution to establish sewer service connection policies from the Unionville, Tunis Mills, and Copperville Sewer Service Area, low-pressure forced main collection system to the Royal Oak Pump Station for the purpose of exempting county governmental uses and services from the provisions thereof subject to certain conditions.
Mr. Callahan, counsel, again, on September 15th, the Public Works Advisory Board took up a motion recommending the county council not adopt resolution 334, and that motion passed via a five to zero vote.
Okay. Brennan?
And in the Planning Commission's October 5th meeting, the Planning Commission made a motion that resolution 334 was not consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan, and that vote passed four zero with one member being absent.
Okay.
No, this isn't a comprehensive water and sewer plan.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, did you need to say something?
I was just, Mr. Stapp asked a question. This is not a, an amendment to the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, so the finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan is not a requirement for the council to approve this.
Oh, okay, got you, got you.
Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that, so I guess at this time, it's, do I have a motion to move it for, for vote?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, Madam Secretary, I got a motion, a second, to move this thing to a vote. Could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
No.
Mr. DeVilio?
No.
Mr. Lesher?
Uh, nay.
Ms. Price?
No.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on to next, we're going to work on a bill, number 1523. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record?
So just to be clear, before we move forward?
Yep.
What we, what we just did was just not to move it to vote tonight, that doesn't kill 334, because all we did is vote not to move it to vote.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, wait.
Which would better is to move it to vote and then vote it down, but since you've already voted not to move it to vote, it still stays on the agenda for next week.
It was eligible for vote.
Right, and you voted not to move it to vote, so it goes back on the agenda for next week.
It'll expire, though, right?
No, it doesn't expire.
It's a resolution.
It doesn't expire.
I think maybe there's a little confusion. Can we have a redo on that? If the vote is to move it to a vote.
Yeah, you want to move it to vote first and then vote it down. If that was your aim, what you wanted to do, you put it on the agenda to vote for it tonight, and then you voted down.
I don't think that this required a motion to advance it to a vote.
It didn't, because it was eligible for vote.
Oh, okay, okay, I see, and correct it. It's already, it's already been read.
I rarely do that.
This was the third reading of this?
It was, it was introduced, we had a public hearing.
Okay, no, you're right.
So then, do you want to change your vote?
No, I do not, I just want to make sure.
I'm just going by, it was eligible for vote. You good?
I'm good.
Okay, good, good.
I saw it, that was one hundred and ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You voted it down.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
No, you're right.
Okay, so just so, so everybody's not confused, resolution 334.
I think I was confused, I think what you said was a motion to move it, okay.
We did that with the other two, because they were public hearings.
Yeah, that was public hearing.
So then I wanted to ask, did you change your vote?
No, 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 we're good.
Okay, okay, so 334 was a motion in denial. Okay, so let's move on to Bill 1523.
Bill number 1523, a bill to amend Chapter 190 of the Talbot County Code, zoning subdivision and land development, to add a definition of country club and to provide for the expansion and major modification of a non-conforming country club in the Resource Conservation RC District.
All right. Brennan?
Evening, counsel. I just wanted, I just wanted to let you know that I did forward you a letter from the Critical Area Commission with respect to Bill 1523, as well as a proposed historic and tax amendment that was before you previously. They did provide written comment on this, and I just wanted to note that based on those comments and the review process for the county for tax amendments regarding critical area amendments or amendments that do affect the critical area, they are required to be forwarded to the critical area for final review and approval prior to adoption and put into our code. Based on the letter that they have provided, there's a number of items that they asked that we find consistency with, with regards to the country club tax amendment as well in order for them to review the application. So if you have any questions with respect to their letter or the tax amendment, I'd be happy to answer.
Has, has anything changed in this bill in response to that?
No, we've received no amendments from the applicant. The applicant has received the same letter from the Critical Area Staff noting the consistency findings that need to be made, as well as a noted policy from the Critical Area regarding commercial aspects of golf courses being prioritized and located outside of the RCA zoning designation.
Okay.
So.
Are we capable of taking action on this tonight, Mr. Thomas?
So according to the Critical Area Commission's letter, so it says, once the tax amendment receives local approval, then it is forwarded to the Critical Area Commission as a proposed change to the county's program, and then they would have the final decision of whether to approve it, approve it with conditions, send it back for more information, or deny it.
So essentially, what you would be doing is move, is moving it forward to the Critical Area Commission for review and final approval of that language.
Similar to a comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment within the.
Yeah, got you. We're voting to move it forward.
All right.
To them, yeah.
Got a question, some questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Price.
So what could they build, in theory, pretty much? I mean, what does this authorize them to do, and then what does it possibly authorize them to build? I mean.
So the, and I'm sorry, I don't have the language directly in front of me, but within the definitions that they provided for country club, I believe there's several amenities that are listed in there with respect to what's included in a country club. So those amenities or additions that are proposed within that definition are things that could be added to the legal non-conforming use up to that major modification expansion threshold, but not to exceed the 15% limitation of lot coverage within the critical area.
So.
And that, that would only be to apply for that, right? They would have to go to the Board of Appeals?
Yes, it's correct. You still have to receive a special exception approval from the Board of Appeals, and then site plan approval.
But it does say clubhouses, dining or banquet facilities, spa or fitness facilities, and then various other recreational activities, which I think is what I had in my head, you know? We're going to do some pickleball courts, maybe they want to do some pickleball courts. But if they could build a whole other clubhouse in addition to what's there, or a banquet facility and have big, you know, wedding venues or whatever, I don't think that is what the intention would be, and I don't know where that would come into the 15% or whatever, but I think I would like to see this a little more narrow. They have a, obviously, a beautiful newly renovated country club facility. They are, I know they're going to do some renovations to the pool and the little structure there, maybe add, you know, something on top of that to expand their snack bar. And, you know, when this first came up, it sounded like it was going to be more for, if you wanted to, you know, do something else recreational, if they need to move the swimming pool or something like that, but I certainly didn't have in my head that it could be another rather large structure, and this doesn't seem to preclude that. And I understand, they still have to go through a special exception process and all of that, but I think from my comfort level, I would love to see them be able to do other recreational things there, not just the golf and the tennis and the pool. But I don't, I'm concerned that it's, it's too broad. So that, or those are just my thoughts right now on this, that it doesn't, they don't have a specific thing that they came to us with, much like, you know, this other thing with the, that we just voted down. You know, we didn't have a specific spot in mind, you know, and sometimes when they come to us, we had something a few weeks ago, too, where they didn't have a specific thing in mind, they just wanted the authority, at least to go and ask, say, "Well, you need to have a thing in mind." So anyway, it's a little too broad right now for me.
Are we able to get, get him a copy of the bill? Because I believe, this does two things. One, it defines country club, and that's where you're reading the facilities.
Right.
The second part allows them to apply, so you would have to have, it's defining what country club is, because that definition's not currently in there. So then, the second part is, such expansion does not cause an increase in the impervious surface of the country club's RC zones beyond 15%. Any new such impervious surface shall be a setback of minimum 300 feet.
But you've got an 18-hole golf course, so 15%, I mean, you've got this, you know, hundreds of acres there, so 15% could be just about anything, and they wouldn't meet their 15%. And then number four said, uses and structures shall be designed to minimize environmental impacts. So again, I think it's just a little too broad, because 15% could pretty much be anything.
I'm, okay, I certainly understand and respect your opinion. I'm prepared to move forward with it, because, again, I feel that the Board of Appeals will do a good job of making sure whatever it is conforms. I'm comfortable with the Critical Areas Commission and their response with it, and...
Is there any way for us to put an amendment on there that it would only be for, you know, recreational type uses and not for something like a banquet hall or, you know, whole other building?
Well, the bill will expire on Thursday, so as far as any amendments, they couldn't, they couldn't go back to the Planning, to the Planning Commission for additional review and comment, so it would have to be a very non-substantive amendment.
So the manager who was here, I believe it was the manager who came in, spoke at the public hearing, right?
Yes, the manager and his.
They didn't have a specific, again, they didn't have a specific thing, they weren't under a specific timeframe, so this doesn't, you know, I, I don't think this needs to go away 100%, but maybe if it's going to expire for us on Thursday, you know, maybe it needs to be, maybe the applicant could come back with something a little more narrow if we can't do an amendment because we're out of time, that still allows them to do really what they had intended, but maybe didn't realize it's written so broad.
Well, I'm with Mr. DeVilio, Mrs. Price. I mean, this, what this allowed to do, number one, is establish what a country club is in our code, which I found surprisingly that it wasn't there. And it does allow any applicant to make application to do whatever structure they want to do. That still has to be reviewed, and it still has to be approved, there still has to be a site planned on, so this doesn't give them carte blanche to go out and do anything willy-nilly. I think there's, there are enough checks and balances in place through the Board of Appeals. Critical Area Commission still has to review this anyway, so we can say yes tonight, and they can still say no, so I'm not concerned that they need to come back here with a specific plan in mind. That's not what they're asking for.
No, I didn't ask a specific plan, just the fact that it wouldn't include some big huge structure like for wedding.
It still has to be reviewed, it still has to be reviewed, and still has to be approved.
Right. Although, although this is, this is this council's final opportunity to speak on this, if this were, if this were to pass. We, if the Critical Area Commission passes it, we don't, we don't get any.
We don't get a second bite.
No. Yeah, you know, I, I share, I share some of, of Mrs. Price's concerns on this about the, how, the possible broad application, the special exception process, and, and, you know, this is just thinking about, about the neighbors. The special exception process basically says that if you meet all the criteria, if you can check all the boxes, lot coverage and everything else, you get your special exception. It's, it's not a judgment call that perhaps this is a little, a little too much massing or, or in some other way infringes on, on neighbors, and I'd love to see this, this reined in or narrowed a little bit. And I, I expressed this earlier to staff, but I don't think that we've come up with a counterproposal yet for how to, how to do that.
Right, because I feel then we would be writing legislation to enable them to do one specific project versus, one, creating the definition, and two, allowing the board that's been appointed to do their job of doing the due diligence. And I, I understand, and I think about what current uses go on out there currently, my wedding was one of them, and the impact upon the neighbors that are out there. I don't foresee the country club coming in front of us to build a wedding venue, they're not in a business for weddings. I don't foresee them to build an amphitheater, because they're not in the business of entertaining more than just their private members. And pretty much everybody I know who lives around it's a member. So as well as they've been excellent neighbors for, I don't know, 100 years, 102 years, something like that, 104 years?
Yeah, right.
I mean, I would, if there was a time to add spot legislation to say, this, you know, this is a country club, then, then this would be it, but I don't like doing that either. I just don't see them doing anything that would, again, change the dynamic of the, of the neighbors, upset the neighbors, or anything different than what they're currently doing. So I will, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve Bill number 1523.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, we usually have a little more discussion. So it, I don't think that it's a specific project, I've already said that twice. I wanted it narrowed, it doesn't mean that you're going to say, "Okay, you can go build a pickleball court." What I want removed from it, especially after what Mr. Lesher said about special exceptions, if you meet the criteria, and it's like, look, anything they build's not going to hit 15%, then it's automatically approved, it's not a judgment call. So I don't know if, if you can speak a little bit more on that special exception process so that the council absolutely understands, is this a, you know, is this a judgment call? I mean, because we are talking about hundreds of acres, and I'm not trying to get it, you're[1677.51] you're just applying for once, I, look, we need a country club definition, I have no problem with that. But as far as the things that they could add to that land, which is, you know, open space, and that's what it was intended for, again, I don't have a problem with whatever type of recreational, you know, recreational, physical, those types of things, but not, not, not big structures, and I, and I don't think that's a big deal to try to narrow it down, so that that's the one thing that, you know, type of things that you couldn't do. It's to enhance the recreational facility, not to enhance the facility and rentals, um, for events, which they do rent it out, and they do rent it out, you know, to people that aren't members, and sometimes it's...
I'm not a member, and that's where I got married, so yeah, I, I get that.
Right.
Well, Brandon, that being said, what Mrs. Price is saying, so it doesn't make me that nervous, because all we're doing is getting, letting go to the next process, when it become to the Board of Appeals, the Planning Commission, um, the Critical Areas, all of that stuff, depending on what they're doing, has got to go through all this process to get anything done.
Yes, that's correct. So if this language was approved as is today, and it went forward, and presumably if the Critical Area were to approve it, and it became part of the code, they would then need to apply for a major modification to a special exception, which would then be reviewed and recommended by the Planning Commission to the Board of Appeals.
There you go.
At that time, the Critical Area would review and comment, and then the Board of Appeal, the Board of Appeals would then hold their hearing on it. And to your point, Ms. Price, the, um, I don't have all of the standards right in front of me for a special exception approval, but, uh, several of those standards reference adverse impacts to neighboring property owners, such as noise, glare, um, you know, increased runoff, environmental impacts, and things of that nature. So those are all part of the overall package of what you have to meet. It's not just your general bulk standards of setbacks and lot coverage to obtain a special exception approval or a modification to one. You still have to prove that there will be no additional impacts or unwarranted impacts on neighboring properties or the environment as part of that special exception. And if public testimony is given and well heard, obviously, then the Board of Appeals has the authority to either table their decision on that, not approve it on some basis of findings, or approve it with conditions based off the testimony they've heard.
But it also could have been written a little narrower too, couldn't it?
Certainly, there's always a possibility of narrowing the scope of what you could and could not do. Obviously, the definition is the definition, and it should include the scope of all those terms in there. But if you wanted to include additional language because you specifically didn't want one type of use that's listed within that definition, there's always some type of language or verbiage you could come up with that would preclude the addition of, you know, structures used for clubhouse, dining facilities, banquet facilities, what have you, and limit it to outdoor recreational uses only, or, you know, pavilion-style or open-air recreation.
Right, that would have been pretty, that would have been pretty simple to do, and we have to trust the process, and you, again, you never know who's sitting in this, you don't know who, who the next, um, you know, board members might be at, at the club, who might want to do something like that. You don't know who's going to be sitting on the Board of Appeals, and if you don't have a con, you know, a concrete thing, oh, well, one neighbor, one or two neighbors is upset, that doesn't necessarily mean the Board of Appeals is going to veto the, the project.
No, it doesn't, although I'm feeling reassured, actually, in this process by, by this, this, uh, elaboration by staff on the special exception process. And, and you say this, this kicks in with, uh, with a major, major site plan review, uh, or, or in what circumstances does, do those, uh, levels of review, of review apply?
For any land use that we have within the code that requires special exception approval, if you are to modify that special exception in any way to actually enlarge it, you have to go through the, what is considered to be a major modification to that special exception, which would warrant returning to the Board of Appeals to either modify an existing special exception that you already have, to then intensify or enlarge it, or you would have to go before them to obtain a new special exception for a land use in which you're proposing on a property that is only permitted by special exception.
Thank, thank you. Actually, that may have, yeah.
Mr. Brandon, this is the third reading, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So, Ms. Collins, just call the vote?
Okay.
I mean, I think that was important information to, to hear, so I appreciate, I appreciate that very much.
Certainly, and I mean, I can, I can pull up all the standards if you want me to.
You've done it.
No, 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 no.
I was going to say, I just know the main ones of concern would be the ones for impacts of neighbors and the environmental quality, and those are cited through several of those standards that they have to meet, um, in the Board of Appeals application.
It's our job to ask questions.
Yep.
That's my, my vote.
Okay. Madam Secretary, we've got a motion, a second, to move 1523 to a vote. Can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Upstand.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Madam Secretary, the next bill number is 1524.
Bill Number 1524, a bill to amend Chapter 190 of the Talbot County Code, zoning, subdivision, and land development regarding solar energy systems.
Okay. Um...
Yeah. Bear with me on this one, there's a lot of amendments, so I'll give you the Planning Commission's few on each one of them. So, to start, to start, obviously, the, the Planning Commission originally recommended Bill, uh, 1524 as-is to approval, uh, for you all. And then we received Amendment 1, which was then sent back to the Planning Commission at their September 26 meeting. Uh, the Planning Commission forwarded a favorable recommendation to the County Council for Bill, or Amendment to Bill 1520, Amendment 1 to Bill 1524, um, and considered it consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as the purpose and intent of Chapter 190. Uh, that motion was confirmed via a four-to-zero vote, with one member being absent. Um, the second amendment, which included the language for the acreage restriction and the 10% requirement for the, uh, parcels for the area dedicated to the large-scale solar energy systems, was also reviewed at the, uh, September 26 meeting by the Planning Commission. Um, the Planning Commission forwarded an unfavorable recommendation to the County Council on Amendment 2 to Bill Number 1524, noting that it was consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan. However, they did have additional concerns that the language as written was not likely to hold up to the Public Service Commission's process if they were to go through with future solar energy system applications. Additionally, they noted that the amendment could also result in premature fragmentation of existing agricultural parcels larger than 100 acres, and that motion was confirmed via four-to-zero vote as well, um, with one member being absent from that meeting. Uh, the third amendment to Bill 1524, which proposed additional language, uh, to what was originally Amendment 1, that added a exemption for solar energy systems that were designated and designed to generate, uh, 2 megawatts of power or less, was, uh, reviewed by the Planning Commission at their September 26 meeting. Um, this was obviously before that language was introduced by council in the September 27th meeting, however, understanding that that language is forthcoming, they did want to provide a recommendation on it, um, as they had a general idea of what that language might look like. Um, when they did review that, they provided a favorable recommendation to the County Council for Amendment 3 on Bill 1524, uh, noting that they believe the amendment is consistent with 2016 comprehensive plan and the purpose and intent of Chapter 190. Uh, that recommend, or that, uh, motion passed four-to-zero with, uh, one member being absent. And then finally, we have Amendment Number 4 to Bill 1524, which added the additional language to what was originally Amendment 1, with an exemption that included, uh, solar energy systems or proposed projects that had been sub, subject to a pre-application meeting, um, prior to June 1st, 2022, that wouldn't exceed 375 acres of enclosed fence area or developed with photovoltaic panels. Um, at the October 5th meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed Amendment Number 4, and they provided an unfavorable recommendation to the County Council on this amendment, stating that it was inconsistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan goals of preserving priority agricultural lands. And that motion was confirmed via a three-to-one vote, with one member of the commission being absent. And together with that recommendation, the Planning Commission also provided several supplementary comments as to why they made their decision. Uh, one member noted to, on the commission noted that they believed amending the language, um, that excluded the two developers with pending projects within the county would be unduly prejudiced with, with the inclusion of the exemption language in Amendment 4. Uh, another member noted that the landowners that already entered into contractual agreements with the developers for pending solar projects would also be unduly prejudiced without the inclusion of the exemption language in Amendment 4. And furthermore, a concern was raised providing exemptions for projects on the basis of completing or attending a pre-application meeting because of its arbitrariness and potential for setting a bad precedent for future amendments. Sorry, that was a lot, so I'll be happy to question.
Sorry, but you did a good job, though. You did a phenomenal job. Okay. Uh, Mr. Lesher?
Mr. Callahan, uh, despite this plethora of, of amendments before us, um, and, and with the comment about the, the Planning Commission's concerns with elements of Amendment 4, I would like to introduce, uh, an, an Amendment 5, uh, which would cure, I hope, at least some of the concerns over Amendment 4 having to do with, with adding, uh, legal weight to, uh, a, a, a planning and zoning staff pre-application meeting. That should be an informal process, and it shouldn't, uh, carry legal weight. Uh, the, my Amendment 5 will use, again, all of the language from that original Amendment 1, um, and then at the, with the new language at the end, uh, exempting certain projects, this subsection B shall not apply to any large-scale SES that was granted a special exception by the Board of Appeals, or had an active PJM new services queue number assigned prior to October 11th, 2022, and that does not exceed 375 acres enclosed by a fence or developed with photovoltaic panels. Um, so it, it, it resets the date to today, the day that we're acting on this, and, and it ties those, uh, it ties those, those exceptions to, um, to the special exception process that, from the Board of Appeals, which does and should carry, uh, legal weight. Uh, and, and the queue process, PJM is the, is the, uh, uh, power distribution company that, that monitors all of the, um, all of the power producers and distributors in a, I don't know, eight or nine state area. New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Delaware, Maryland, Ohio, parts of Indiana, Illinois, Michigan, Kentucky, and even a tiny little bit, uh, in North Carolina, and a tiny little bit of Tennessee. Um, PJM has put all of the lar, the utility scale solar projects, because there are so many of them coming in, uh, everything on hold to revise their process. Nevertheless, it has a formal queuing system, uh, and, and because of this public entity, it's public process, uh, it does seem appropriate that, that an entity that has been through the stages that they would get into this queue and remain in an active part of it now, um, with that investment, merits the, uh, merits the exception.
Got you.
As well. And, and the overall intent, I should, I should back up and say, uh, behind this is, is that we're looking, uh, of course, with the original bill, uh, to fund farmland preservation through the creation of solar projects, they would pay into the, um, the fund that we use to buy easements to preserve farmland, but also, uh, this, this amendment specifically, and, and the amendments that it was based on, seek to cite solar projects away from our best agricultural soils, that we not lose our, our best cropland in the county to solar projects, but put it on the more, on the more marginal lands, and, and follows an existing scoring system for that easement process, uh, to, uh, to determine which are those, those good soils. So I, at this point, I'm introducing that as, as an Amendment 5.
Okay. So, so Madam Secretary, um, do we need, um, a raise of hands to introduce that?
Yes.
Okay.
Introduce, introduced by Callahan, Davilio, and Lesher then?
No, I have my hand back.
Oh, you did too, and Pack.
I was coughing with the same, with the same.
That was a magic trick.
So, um, at, at this time, um, Madam Secretary, um, is, this is, this is eligible, eligible for vote two, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, I think the process should be, um, that we should walk our way down through the amendments, and, um, go ahead and vote on each one of them, and, and kind of go through these amendments, okay?
Procedurally, I have not offered an amendment. Do I have to?
No, you do not.
Let's hold off on that, Frank. Okay.
So I got a question.
Yep, yep, go ahead.
So, none of these amendments can live together?
Correct. They all, they all amend the same language, uh, which would be, it, it, well, it creates a new subsection 190-32.4D1B.
So Amendments 1, 3, 4, and 5 are all, in essence, the same language, only kind of putting, fine-tuning it. So you really, to get to Amendment 5, you have to vote down 1, 3, and 4?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And, and so maybe that merits of discussion in advance of, of doing this voting, and, you know, as, as one who, who requested the drafting of, and, and, and introduced Amendments, uh, 1, 3, 1 and 3, and, and I joined in sponsorship of Amendment 4, um, well, I, I would have been prepared to support 1 or 3. Uh, I'm not going to, to support them now, because I think that we're, through this iterative process, the second time we've heard that word this evening, um, that we've, we've, we've fine-tuned this language in a way that, that I think achieves that, that balance of both, um, preserving our, our best, our best croplands for agriculture, and, uh, and recognizing the, the effort and investment of, of the, uh, of the entities that have, have gotten a, a, a certain far, uh, degree down, uh, the, the process of, of developing these, these, uh, solar energy system projects. And so, just despite the fact that I, I, in, in the absence of 5, I would have supported these others, I think that that is the one that I'm prepared to support tonight.
Okay.
So I, and I'll let, lead you all to where I'm, I'm going with this too, and I, I agree with Mr. Lesher. First, when we had this original opportunity to review this, we've seen other counties do everything from just moratoriums to try to be extremely restrictive, just to prevent it. Um, this is clean energy that's coming. I, I greatly appreciate the work that was done by Mr. Council and his commission. He called on to this right out of the gate, and realized that we don't really have that big of a say in this. Um, and if we are going to say anything, we have to be very genuine, yet very open. We're partners in this. This is something that is coming down from above that we're being forced to do. And again, as I said before, we have, we have the opportunity to perpetually save farmland and preserve it forever with the dollars that we're receiving from some farmland that we're going to lose temporarily. Uh, we've, we do not do this to other farmers when they're doing things such as building chicken houses, uh, turning gravel pits, um, wineries, things like that, that can perpetually stay what, what that is, and disrupt the ground. So I, Mr. Council deserves a tremendous amount of credit for the work that he did in the lift of this, as well as organizing many groups for us to meet with. Um, I appreciate the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, and, um, Carol Bean, meeting with her, and, and their organization, Eastern Shore Land Conservancy, um, trying to figure out the best way to prevent solar from coming on our best farmland. I, I don't want to give up our best soils, but unfortunately, we, we, we don't have a choice at the end of the day. The Public Service Commission can preempt us and enforce what, what they want to do, as this is their goal. Uh, and I would much rather be partners in this than fight this and create lawsuits to try to prevent anything from happening. While I would be prepared to pass the original legislation without any amendment, I appreciate the additional work that Mr. Ca, Mr. Lesher has done to come up with Amendment 5, and I'm willing to vote down the other amendments to join him in support of Amendment 5. The last one.
Thank you, Mr. Davilio.
Mr. Callahan, um, I, I sponsored Amendment 4, and reading the language in Amendment 5, um, I believe what I'm going to do is pull my support of Amendment 4, um, uh, and therefore, we won't have to deal with that this evening. And I think Amendment 5 still keeps in play those, um, projects that are already in the pipeline, and does give them an avenue to proceed, and I think that's where I was looking for some, some justice, um, so that they would not have to go back to the starting board, um, but they can continue on. I think the way this verbiage is written allows those large-scale SES, um, that were subject to the Department Planning and Zoning Staff Pre-Application Meetings prior to, uh, if my reading is right, prior to June, no, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Callahan, I mean, Mr. Lesher, let me go to your amendment, not mine. I'm reading my own amendment. I think the way that you have this written, um, allowing them to go to the, uh, Board of Appeals, uh, and also having an active, uh, serviced, uh, queue number, um, prior to Novem, October 11th, I think I can live with that. I think that still keeps those projects in play. So, um, I'm going to pull Amendment 4, Mr. Callahan.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Pack.
Mr. Callahan, if that is going to be withdrawn, you and I also need to withdraw our, our, our introduction. We co-introduced it with Mr. Pack.
Right. I mean, that's the thing, is, it just because it says proposed by, it doesn't say who it was introduced by.
I, I am, I am, I'm willing to join Mr. Pack in with, withdrawing my introduction of 4.
So am I.
So I have, um, Amendment 2, and I have to say that I disagree with the Planning Commission saying that one of their, they found it consistent, but one of their... saying that one of their, they found it consistent, but one of their reasons was they thought that that would be harmful to the PSC, I mean, as far as preemption. I think it does completely the opposite, because what we're doing now, and I'm not saying I disagree with scoring it and trying to preserve, I mean, all, all of the things that Mr. DeVilleo said and what Mr. Council has done, and wanting to fund agricultural preservation in the MALT program and, and keeping, you know, the, the very bulk of our best soils in agriculture, absolutely, I agree with it 100%. But we're putting an out-and-out ban, at least from our standpoint. Now, again, the PSC can do whatever they want. I felt like amendment two did two things. One, I think it says to the PSC that they recognize they're trying to preserve the best, but we're at least giving a little bit of wiggle room for the larger ones, I don't know about fragmentation, stuff like that. Maybe you could have easily said, okay, it has to be clustered all in one area, and you wouldn't put it here, there, and everywhere, the solar panels, you know? Maybe you should have thought about that, and, you know, we could, we, you know, we could do that. But now we're allowing solar panels to potentially go on any parcel, but in a very, very limited basis on the higher scores that are large, large parcels. I don't know how many of those there are, maybe I should have looked that up. But I think it's absolutely the opposite of what the planning commission said. I think it actually strengthens our case that we would be allowing it basically on any parcel of land, but we're strongly limiting it on the best soils. So I think they're wrong on that one. And also, I took to heart the gentleman who came and testified, who was clearly a good steward of his land. He owned more than 100 acres, and he can't do anything. And anybody, you know, you buy where you buy, and whether you have good soils or, or not as good soils. Again, I agree with trying to preserve as much of those good soils as possible, but they have a farm on really good soils, and yet they still want to do a little something to help bring in additional revenue. And what we're doing is we're telling those people, your hands are completely tied. You can't do anything else on that land regarding solar. And I, I think that people like that, who, like, they have 200 acres or whatever, and they can't do more than 10 acres, I think we've just taken that ability, and he really thought that it was unfair. And I'm sure there's others that feel the same way, thought it was unfair that somebody who has a little bit, you know, lesser quality of soil can go out and put pretty much as much as they want on, on, on their land. So I don't know how you can allow, you know, of, of the other amendments, you know, putting that scoring system in, again, takes away those people's ability completely from doing any additional revenue in solar, even a, you know, a small, less than 10%. I think that's, I think that's unfair to them, and I, and I, again, he was, he was very compelling to me, and I'm sure he's not the only one. I don't know how we allow for something for those people that score higher than 240. Again, I think it's, I've been around the state a lot and dealt with PSC and all that stuff with Mako, and we've dealt with other preemption cases, and I've seen them. I actually think it strengthens our case. So I, I don't know how to work something in with amendment two unless there's some support to, you know, to do something with amendment two, or there's a way to incorporate some of that ability along with one of the other amendments, because it seemed like it was an either or, whether it was amendment one or two, or two and three, or two and five, or whatever it's going to be. And I'm not sure how, how to address that.
Small, small-scale solar energy systems will still be allowed, as defined in the ordinance.
Correct, 10 acres.
This, 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 this simply applies to the, this scoring system simply applies to the large-scale solar energy.
Understood, but you can only, they can only do 10 acres. And so if you own, you know, hundreds of acres, you're, you know, that's not going to be necessarily enough of a revenue enhancement, you know, and I just really felt like, you know, preserving the vast majority of it and allowing up, you know, up to that served a couple purposes, both for the landowner and a sense of fairness, and also strengthening the case on the PSC. I don't think 10 acres is enough for somebody if they own 500 acres or 1,000 acres.
Okay. Counsel, any more?
Shall we proceed to voting on the amendments?
Yep.
The remaining amendments?
Okay. So the, the remaining ones is, we're not, we're not doing, well, we're going to do each one, correct?
Yeah, except we've withdrawn four.
Okay, we've withdrawn four, all right, all right. All right, so is there a motion in a second to move forward on the vote for amendment one?
Do you just take the votes?
I think you can just call for the roll call.
Oh, okay, just call. They're eligible. I'm just going to call the roll for each one of them. Madam Secretary, amendment one.
Mr. Pack, I mean, Mr. Callahan?
No.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Nay.
Mr. Lesher?
Nay.
Ms. Price?
No.
Mr. Pack?
No.
Okay. Amendment two.
Mr. Callahan?
Nay.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Nay.
Mr. Lesher?
Nay.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
No.
Amendment three.
Mr. Callahan?
Nay.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Nay.
Mr. Lesher?
Nay.
Ms. Price?
No.
Mr. Pack?
No.
Okay, let's, do we, we need to make a motion on, on five, correct? Or did we already?
Well, we've introduced it.
We've introduced it. Okay, it's been introduced.
And you have the four.
I'm sorry.
It's been introduced and you have the, the four of you have supported it, so.
Okay, it's been introduced, so.
You just vote.
Okay.
Four, not five. Four is.
Yeah, four, four is done. Okay, amendment five, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
No.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
None of those amended.
Yes. So, Mr. Callahan?
Yes, sir.
If I may on this, you know, Bill 1524 now as amended, there, there is an element in here, in this amendment, in this amended language, that, that I think we don't necessarily, that we don't have the, there were objections in amendment four from the, from the, the planning commission. We've cured one of them with amendment five. We've not cured the other, which is just the, the very nature of, of providing a, an accept, an exemption here. It was clear that the planning commission was, was a little reluctant in providing this recommendation, seeing this as an inherently political process. Of course, part of the calculus here is what will withstand a, a preemption challenge before the Public Service Commission. There's no such, there's no such calculus in the comprehensive plan. And so of course, such, such a, a way of, of developing this rich cropland does, does not, this best cropland would not be supported by the comprehensive plan. We have, we have a different job here than the planning commission is charged with. It's not merely carrying out the comprehensive plan, although that is an important duty for us. But we also need to make sure that, that our legislation withstands that kind of challenge. And, and I feel that we've gotten to the point, because we have, with this amended language, we've gone a step further in demonstrating that the county is working with solar installation applicants and landowners. And, and as, if this can go forward and these projects can succeed, those projects in the queue and that have already received their, their special exemption will yield, it appears, significant funds for our land pres, our agricultural land preservation fund. This, this, despite exempting a couple of projects here, I think is, is a significant step forward for Talbot County and for, for enabling solar development in Talbot County. And so I will support it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lesher. I want to comment to, that's well said. I, this, this is one time where the council, in, in the committees, the landowners that we all met, we've been talking for the last five months on this, and, and I, I think at the, at this stage, we, we pretty much have got it right, and we, and everybody sort of hit a, hit a balance with this. And I really appreciate you guys as owners, you guys representing some of these guys that are, got the, the projects already on board, you've put hard work in it, and, and I really appreciate you working with us too, because we wanted to get it right too. And staff, you've done a, a hard work trying to get us prepared for it. Mr. Thomas, you've done a great job. Mr. Lesher, I appreciate it, all the hard work you've done, because I think the common ground, this is one of the first times, we've, we've all hit pretty common ground, and it, and it feels good that we can do that. You know, even though somebody can come in and, and sort of drop a bomb on us, but it's good to know that we're at even ground right now. So, so I appreciate your efforts, guys. I really do out there, and, and that's what we're, we're up here to help and, and move forward. So that's what we're going to do, and anybody else would like to say something? Ms. Price?
I'm, my concern is preemption with the PSC. And while I, I mean, I, I agree with, like I said before, with the preserving of the agriculture and trying to get funds into the MALT program to, to do that, and, and trying to preserve as much as possible, I get it. But I, I think by completely banning, from our perspective, anything with a greater score, I think the PSC is going to get all over that. That is my main concern, that's probably why I'm not going to vote for this, even though, you know, it's, it's tough, because sometimes you agree with 95% of it, but on that one piece, I, I think we're setting ourselves up for some trouble. And I hope that I'm proven wrong when a project comes through that wants to go someplace and it's not allowed and the PSC overrules us. I hope that doesn't happen. But, you know, I've also been around the state agencies for the last 12 years, and I've seen these preemption things come back to bite the counties when we try to do something that is different than, you know, quote-unquote, state law. So I have, I have concerns.
Okay. Did it?
I'll make a motion to approve Bill 1524 as amended.
Got a second?
Do, do we need, do we need this, or do we just, do we just call the vote?
Yeah, just call the vote.
Correct?
Yeah. It's already been amended, so.
It's already been amended.
Just matter of calling the vote.
Yep. 1524. No, they, they, they passed the amendment, they haven't passed the bill.
So now the bill is before. It's now before the council as amended.
Right. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
No.
Mr. Pack?
Although Ms. Price had me thinking, I'm going to vote aye.
Okay, okay. All right, let's move on. Okay. All right. I think, update, Nancy, if you want to come on up here for the mental health workshop? You guys want to come on up?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, how are you?
Great. I was trying to figure out how to work the word iterative in our presentation, but I'll just let it go.
Man, please, Dill.
Yeah.
You saved the best for last.
Okay. You guys want to introduce yourselves so everybody can see all, all your pretty faces here?
Ooh, how do I? Okay. Good evening, Nancy Andrew, I am the Director of Talbot Family Network, which is the local management board for Talbot County.
Great.
Hi, good evening, Katie Dilly, I'm the Executive Director at Midshore Behavioral Health. We are the core service agency serving the five midshore counties.
Sure, and Ginny Vashaffal, Emergency Management Coordinator for Talbot County Emergency Services.
Great.
So we are here to give you a very quick update on a work group that was established earlier this year for the county around the issue of mental health, knowing our shared concern around the well-being of our community citizens or county citizens. And since we've done this under the auspices of the Emergency Operations Center, Geneva was kind enough to come along tonight to kick us off.
Sure, thank you. So it is for to give a little bit of context to the group before we get into the details. So this group was created under the structure of the Emergency Operations Center that was activated in response to COVID. It's been a two-year-long plus response, and as the impacts continued, we addressed or saw the rise in concern for mental health needs. So we created the Mental Health Work Group, and just as we, I think this was our 10th or 11th work group, that was established to meet the need and address the concern. So essentially, we brought all of the subject matter experts to the table, and here we are.
Okay, so it was a complex issue, we were a little uncertain at the beginning how to get our arms around this, where to start with all of our community partners around the table. Local management boards around the state use a framework, an evaluation framework known as results-based accountability. Within that framework is a process called Turn the Curve, which is meant to be a simple five-step process to help communities move from talk to action when it comes to addressing complex problems. So we use this framework to guide our conversation. Just to give you the quick rundown on what we've been doing in our eight meetings since the beginning of 2022, we've dug into the data a little bit. We all had a sense that the need was out there, the need was growing in terms of mental health concerns for both children, youth, and families, but we looked at the data to really see what the story was. Then we took time as a committee to interpret that data to try to look at the story behind it. From there, we talked more about our partners, and this is an ongoing process for us. Who are the partners that are already at the table? What are their roles? What are the partners do we need to bring to the table? And even include what are other sectors we might include? Then we started to transition the conversation into what works. What are some of the things that are already happening in this community that might need additional resources or amplification to increase their impact? What other good ideas can we find from other communities? What ideas of our own can we bring up and implement for the citizens of Talbot County? And then lastly, what we will need to do to bring this whole process together is to develop an action plan, to put our ideas down on paper and actually make assignments and start, start to talk about the dollars behind them and how they will come to life. One of the issues that has come up frequently while this group has been meeting has been workforce issues. Time and time again, we were hearing about shortages among our providers and the agencies that are working in this field. So with the help of Midshore Behavioral Health, we did a provider survey in May. We had a response rate of 38% from those who were surveyed. These were both individual practitioners and agencies together. They represented close to 17 full-time equivalent therapists. And what we found was at that window in time, that snapshot, there were 17 unfilled positions in the county for qualified therapists. Over 60% of the therapists or agencies that responded to this survey said that they had an, they did have a wait time, and those wait times averaged anywhere from four weeks to 12 weeks. Issues that came up in the survey were identifying and hiring new therapists. That was top on the list as the greatest challenge. Other issues that were raised from the survey were the increasing salary demands, it's a competitive market. There's a higher intensity caseload, so we knew that there was a need for mental health prior to COVID. The need has increased, and the kinds of needs that practitioners are seeing are more intense. And then also, a lot of concern for our practitioners, for our therapists about stress and burnout.
And Nancy, can I ask a quick question?
Please.
So, so the, the one thing with the, the four weeks to 12 weeks, if you go back on, on the waiting?
Mm-hmm.
Is, is, is that, is that somebody that's calling in there that we can't help, so to speak, and they would have to wait a, a, a month or a couple of months to be able to get in? Is that, is that what that sort of means?
I think, I'd like to speak to that, if I may. I think it's, depends on the, it's a case-by-case situation.
Right.
So we do offer urgent care appointments here in the county.
Okay.
But, you know, the wait time's going to vary depending on if you're working to get a child and adolescent, you know, individual into an appointment versus an adult. Insurance also drives a lot of that too.
I see.
We have, you know, ironically, a much harder time getting individuals that are served by the private sector into appointments often, just by way of, you know, the, the sheer paneling of the clinicians to be able to provide services under some of the private providers is a lot harder than being served in the Medicaid system. So there's a lot of circumstances that go into that wait time, and we have a lot of providers that don't have wait lists necessarily, but some that have large ones, and the workforce piece also plays.
Well, I appreciate that, because I, I just want to make sure everybody sort of realized, because if, it, it sort of struck me if, if the mental health- Well, I appreciate that, because I just want to make sure everybody sort of realizes, because it sort of struck me if the mental health thing, if somebody really needs to see somebody.
Right, we do, we do offer urgent care appointments within the region, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
All five counties have providers that offer urgent care appointments.
Okay, great. I appreciate that.
Katie?
Okay, so we thought it would be helpful to give some Talbot County-specific updates to you all this evening, just of some things that have been happening. And of course, our group, we were using it sort of as a think tank to unpack and process, you know, positive developments within the behavioral health, you know, treatment provider realm in the county, as well as challenges that, of course, Nancy touched on in some of our surveying of our partners. So just to bring you up to speed on some things that have developed since our group has been convening is, we are happy to report that Talbot County Public Schools, with your support, was able to expand their budget and offer three new full-time positions for social work spots here in the county, which have been filled. Of course, with every change in workforce, there's been some shifting of those same clinicians we're serving in other provider capacities here in the county. So although there's been a gain, there's been a loss. So we've talked a lot about that and how we navigate, you know, how workforce is moving around to different competitive positions and how we're sort of sharing the same pool of individuals, which is a challenge. I'm glad, very pleased to report that Channel Marker here at their Easton location off of Glebe Road, we were able to secure some grant funding for them within the last two years to expand their service line to now have an eight-bed crisis unit. That's an adult crisis unit for mental health crisis. We recently, within the last month, were able to get that facility licensed, which is a huge success. And we're just looking to support them in having workforce to be able to open their doors to serve the community. So that'll be a nice alternative for our mobile crisis providers to refer individuals to a crisis bed there as opposed to an inpatient bed in our shore regional facility. So that will help with diverting emergency room usage. We've also got, we've had a large shift in a provider leaving the region. This is a provider that was serving not just Talbot County residents, but actually had three sites on the eastern shore. That was Eastern Shore Psychological Services. They had a location in Chestertown here in Easton, and as well as their flagship in Salisbury closed their doors officially to clients in the community on September 9th. So that's been a large project that Midshore Behavioral Health has been involved in, as well as all of our health department counterparts in all nine counties of the eastern shore, given the great impact there. We saw about 2,200 individuals were impacted that were receiving services through Eastern Shore Psychological Services in need of new homes for treatment. So we, it was a very busy summer, working with that organization to follow the regulations with all that's required for closure, as well as supporting clinicians and finding new places of employment. And of course, our, our large focus has been ensuring that those clients that have been served, which several of them are very complicated, in need, found new homes to receive services. So that's something that the group has discussed, and how we've seen our providers in the region really step up to expand their services, welcome new clinicians, and of course, receive the new, the clients that have been impacted by this closure. So we've seen a shift, but a lot of, one of the strengths that I think our provider network here in the region has is the ability to partner and realize when there is a need, they step up, and we've seen that happen. Talbot Family Network has been able to prioritize using some grant funds for a mental health programming-based initiative, and I believe there's RFP that's currently out or recently closed, to offer some additional mental health services here in the county. So we're looking forward to that service being selected and coming online soon. Midshore Behavioral Health has been working with the Behavioral Health Administration to secure funding to open two adolescent clubhouses here on the midshore. So we have one adolescent clubhouse that serves four counties, and one that's serving Dorchester County exclusively, and they are supported by Menary's Dream Alliance, which is an organization that was just incorporated, I believe, back in 2019 as a nonprofit, and they're doing amazing work here with our youth in the community. And we also are expanding our Child and Adolescent Crisis Response System to include mobile response and stabilization services in all of the midshore counties. So we have our Mobile Crisis Vendor, which is affiliated to Sante Group. This is the same group that's expanding their services to be working to identify children that are at risk of becoming in a mental health crisis, working to identify individuals at risk through our school systems and with our outpatient providers, so we get ahead of the crisis and just have that team available if needed to serve them. And one thing that's really exciting, I know we've talked a lot this evening about integrated health, Chop Tank Community Health, back in 2020 during the midst of the onset of the pandemic, did expand their service line to now provide behavioral health services. So they're providing mental health as well as substance use services, and they're beginning to expand their medication-assisted treatment services as well, which is a huge strength and hopefully will address a lot of the stigma associated with receiving care. You know, so individuals that are seeking their primary care are also able to receive mental health services there now. So that's, that's been a major success that's come into the county. One of the things that we've been working on, and Nancy identified this, part of our surveying was identifying our top priorities as a work group. Now, granted, we're just now getting into how do we address these issues and where do we start? And I think the common theme, we've heard it all evening, when we're talking about services and healthcare is workforce. And so that's where we're going to start, really unpacking what we can do as a group to incentivize behavioral health workforce to come into the region and also preserve those individuals so they're not leaving the region to go and provide services elsewhere. Of course, parenting training, educational support, our social, emotional learning and mindfulness, our clinician training to make sure that they're, you know, providing the most up-to-date and sophisticated services to our clients and our community members. And of course, you know, something that is definitely on the table is how can we all come together and, you know, really try to campaign for folks to address their mental health and seeking help and addressing that stigma as a community? So that's something that we'll be talking about a little bit more, maybe even soliciting more support from, from you all and being a part of that. And lastly, where do we go from here? We've, we've gathered eight times, and in that time, we've had a lot of different priorities we've talked about. We've been using the results-based accountability process as a guiding, you know, way to get our, get our work focused and more strategic. But we realize that we, we maybe put the cart before the horse a little bit. We need to slow down and back up and come up with a more structured process and how our group is operating and who's leading that, who's a member, who's represented. There are behavioral health providers that are not at the table, that are here in the county. So we need to be more intention, intentional with our inclusion of all providers that are serving this community and really doing our part to invite them to the conversation. Of course, setting up our mission and vision, which I think is something that's really important when you do this work and have a group that's this invested, that we need to define that. And in the absence of it, you know, we're, we're doing good work, we're having productive conversations, but we need a little bit more structure on where we're taking it. And of course, taking those strategic goals that we've identified through our surveying and being more intentional with how we lay out our planning, whether that be annually or in a three-year plan, but just having a little bit more focus. So that's where we're going to regroup in the next couple of weeks and hopefully start to lay the foundation that we, we were excited to get together, of course. And this is a hot topic and something that needs to be addressed, but we'd like to have a little bit more structure, so that's where we are.
Great.
And I do appreciate the support. I know, I know Clay and Corey, you've been very active in supporting the work and participating in the group, and we appreciate your support and look forward to continue, continued engagement, so.
Well, first of all, Katie, thank you so much for your presentation. Nancy, you know, this, this is, it's important work. It's not just busy work. You know, your mental health is, and your physical health, they go together. So, and Dr. McGuire is back there, and her nurses, they take care of a lot of the physical ailments that our community suffers. But the mental piece of it still needs to be something that we need to focus on as well. And, and we all know that COVID put a lot of stress on people, and our adolescents, our young people, they felt it too. They feel stressed just like we feel stressed. And so, you know, the formation of this mental health task force or workforce was to try to more fine-tune or find point where Talbot County needs to move towards when it comes to mental health, what resources this council, future councils would probably want to direct towards mental health, how we work with you all as providers in the community around mental health. We get a report, this council also sits at the Board of Health, as you know. We take one hat off and put the other hat on. So, you know, a mental health update, perhaps something that future councils want to include as the Board of Health, is to hear from the mental health community as far as where we are. So I really hope and pray it doesn't go away, that, you know, your mission, the things that you want to see done, the things that this and future councils want to see done can, can happen. And it may require just some other resources to, to help along with it. So sad to see Easton Shore Psychological Services go away. When I came here some 20 years ago, working with a pro, a pro probation, they were always my go-to.
Oh, yes.
And, and so very sad to see that they had to close their doors here in the area. But the problem doesn't go away. We still have to find a way to address these people who need our support. So, yeah, what's next? You know, how do we now direct this, this committee and, and move, move us forward? Is the question.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price?
It's obviously incredible work and a real problem that's only getting worse with just, obviously, there's, there's COVID, of course, but just the negativity, I think, that's around us in this world and that we're all dealing with, you know, just the divisiveness and all of that, and it's not going to make your jobs any easier. So this work is, is really important, and we got to obviously keep at it. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Mr. DeVilleo?
So I reached out when Easton Shore Psychological Services was shutting down, and I received word of that. And I've got a lot of friends who do, who are counselors that have their own businesses. And so I was glad to hear that this work, that you guys were already meeting. And I hope, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of our money. That was my thought and concern, and I hope, hope you guys have been able to benefit from that and receive the resources you need from the county.
Thank you. Mr. Lesher?
Well, I'll confess to, at times in the past, being perhaps a little confused by the, the array of organizations and agencies and services that provide, that, 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 that work on these issues. And I am elated to see the, even if, even if you're still mapping out precisely how this is to be done, the fact of coordination among these, among these entities, I think is, should benefit the community and, and those who are looking to navigate their way through these services. Thank you for doing that.
Yep. Like, like Alex said, you guys are great. I mean, we're blessed to have you guys. That's for sure. Dr. McGuire, you too, in the back there. Appreciate you hanging in there with us tonight. But it's really important that people know that they have people like yourself that they can reach out and you can help them. That's why I was asking tonight about, you know, it, you know, in the near future, people are going to need us, you know, and, you know, we're going to be there to help them. So it's very important for you ladies to, to come to us, especially with the next council, and help them understand how important this is and where we're at. Because you're really setting the bases and setting goals for what's going to happen in the future. So I really appreciate that. So. Okay. Madam Secretary? Okay, is there?
This was just a advisory opportunity.
No, go ahead, Mr. Sam.
Councilor President.
Yeah, please.
First of all, I'd like to just thank Katie, Nancy, Geneva, and the others who aren't here. We're coming together, Maria, for the others who aren't here that have stepped up, and they're out there every day, and they're fighting a fight.
Yeah.
You know, this is one of the, you know, this is a tough issue, but this is one of the areas that Talbot County comes together. And this is an extension of things that we did over the last two years, whether it was working with the Hispanic community Multicultural Resource Center to establish a 24-hour call center. So we were serving that segment of the community, or whether it was working with our amazing food pantries to ensure that people's needs were being met. A number of issues have come up. And I think Councilman Pack recognized that, that, you know, mental health is a, is a major issue that we're battling right now. And these are the folks that, that are dealing with this tough situation. So I think that at least the eight meetings that you had, you probably expanded, you facilitated conversation, good conversation. You helped nail down issues and, and, you know, you targeted in, targeted in on certain areas. And I think moving forward, you have an opportunity. I mean, clearly, we have the Midshore Behavioral Health Organization that is a lead agency for Talbot County and the other four counties, and you've taken a lead in this. Talbot Family Network has a, has a real place in this situation as well. And I think they'll continue to move forward and, and, and help us, you know, maybe achieve some goals and objectives that we come up with.
Certainly, and, and Mr. Callahan is correct, you know, you know, this council is going to change after November, but your job, your mission, won't. And so it's going to really be incumbent upon you to come in here and introduce yourself to the next four or five, well, next council sitting up here and say, hey, look, this is our mission, this is, we're here to do, and, and not be a stranger. Again, I think, just like we hear from the health, the health officer on, on those issues dealing with health of our community, we need to somehow sub, put you guys in there as well around the mental health piece. I don't know how that looks or, you know, going forward, but I think that it's important enough to do that, and it's important enough, I think, if it means saying, hey, look, you know, we need dollars put towards this piece, whether it be to help put another person in the schools, or whether it means to fund another body in one of the clinics, that maybe we, it, it's, it's too important just to go away, because this body is going to change in a couple of months. So, you know, I'll still be around to champion you and be your cheerleader and maybe pop in on a meeting or two. But again, I want to thank you all for all that you've done. I know we had Beth Ann here about a week last month? Yeah, Beth Ann was here last month. So, you know, great job. Continue moving forward, and your work is not yet done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yep. Okay. Next on the agenda is a consideration of a contract for sale and a purchase of real estate on Unit 1 on Kramer Lane, 510 Kramer Lane. Yeah. Cadmus, I'm sorry, Cadmus Lane. Yeah, yeah. I don't know where I was with that one. Sorry about that. So, Mr. Thomas, you want to, you want to help us with that?
Sure. So you have before you a contract to acquire 38,000 square feet of space in the old Cadmus building. As you said, 510 Cadmus Lane for a new county health department. The contract provides that the purchase price is not to exceed $13 million. Of that, the little more than $3 million is for the purchase of the actual unit, and then the remaining slightly less than $10 million is for, for the improvements that will be built out to the county specifications prior to closing it through negotiations with the, with the property owner Achievement Park. And I know Dr. McGuire is here and can speak to some of the discussions that she's already had about the work being done.
Exactly.
Obviously, we've had discussions about this as well. Obviously, we've had discussions about this as well, so.
Absolutely. This, this is very exciting. Dr. McGuire, would you mind coming on up? That'd be great.
Yeah, I'm, so overview, I'm happy to answer any, any questions the council might have.
Sure. Mr. Stan?
This has been, you know, this has been an effort that's been underway for some time now, and the health department, of which Maria will talk about, I'm sure, the existing health department is in need of replacing, and the, the facility that we are looking at moving to with your approval would, would not co-locate, but certainly put the facility close to other health services and still in a very walkable area for the people in downtown Easton, so it's exciting. And I think Maria's here to probably add to the excitement, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Welcome, Dr. McGuire.
Hi, hi, good evening. And so just super briefly, knowing the late hour, I just wanted to mention, yeah, so we've talked in the past, and this has been a multi-year process really about the needs of the health department going forward and the space needs, and I just have to say that, you know, even last week, we held a, a planning meeting, and one of the big impediments that's always listed in our discussions internally in the health department is a lack of effective space, not just, not just, you know, absolute space, but effective space, and so this, this new space would allow us to really be able to provide services better to the community and work together with all our community stakeholders, such as the three women who just presented before you, so, you know, so there are so many benefits, not only to allowing the health department to provide its own services in, in a more effective way, but also, as was mentioned by Clay, you know, having our, our future neighbors be able to work closely together, having some warm handoffs will be really a true benefit to the community, and we really hope that this will be a venue where we can bring the community in more and, you know, have some of our partners really take advantage of, of this space. And so I, I really want to commend the, the council for supporting those of us who've been involved in the process going forward, because it's often, it takes a certain amount of leadership to really drive something to the finish line, and I feel we're, we're closing in every day, so, so thanks for all your support, and we're really excited, and we hope that the community will, will see the benefits very soon in terms of what this project will mean.
That's great, that's great. Mr. DeVio.
No, I'm very happy with all the, the planning, the research that was done and how everything's come together.
Mr. Lusher.
I don't think I've got questions either, recognize the need here.
Yep. Mr. Pack.
Again, long time in the making, goes back to your predecessor, and now we've finally found a place that we can move you into. We know that the building over on Hanson Street has, is a very AIDS building, have some health issues, and it's just, just too small for your operation, so, you know, being that the county is tasked with finding a home for you, I think this will allow you to, to grow and spread your staff out a bit and hopefully be a, a new location for the next 50, 60 years. So I'm excited about it, can't wait to see the grand opening. We just heard from, you know, yeah, good news, all, 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 tonight should have been a good news meeting, you know, we had Ken Kuzel in here earlier today with, with his great news about the CON, you know, we have our mental health task force moving forward, and now we have this, this exciting news about what's going to happen at the health department, so a lot of, a lot of good news tonight, so I'm happy that we're moving forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price.
Mr. Callahan, my bone to pick with you, as you keep calling on me last, and Mr. Pack gets all the good lines, because he and I have been here together, and I think this was on our plate with the problem with the health department facility from year one, you know, so for the past 11 years or so, this has been an issue. Obviously, we had severe funding problems at, you know, the beginning, you know, when I first came on the council, now we have, you know, different situations, but the fact of the matter is whether we had money in the bank or not, this facility was a problem, and so I am really happy to be able to see this project as well, you know, move to some kind of completion and try to tie up some loose ends that have been dangling for the last 11 or 12 years. So congratulations on getting a new facility.
And I'm on board with everybody too, so congratulations to you, the community, the council worked hard. I mean, since I've been in here for eight years, I mean, it's, it's been an issue ever since, so I'm proud of, I'm very proud of this council to move that forward. You were right, it, it takes leaders and a lot of work to move, to keep moving this forward, keep moving this forward. So, you know, we all put a lot of hard work in it, and, and I can tell you, staff, you know, Clay and Jess and, and everybody tried to put this together, and, and we went through a few finance directors here, and, you know, I'm not sure if a couple of them quit because of this, but I'm not really sure, but now we're focused, it's great news tonight, and, you know, it, it's, it's a good feeling that you got a, you got a home, and like Mr. Pack said, you know, we're, we're on board for, you know, 50, 60 years, you know, of, of good stuff. It's in a phenomenal location, in my, you know, that the community can come and walk there, and so I'm, I'm really proud of being part of it, that's for sure. Okay, all right.
We expect you to live there for the next 50 or 60 years, too.
Yeah, exactly.
I was going to say, 50 or 60 years, yeah.
Exactly, okay.
Yeah, exactly, we're good.
All right, now we need a motion second to approve the contract as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion second to move forward with this contract. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Okay, next we've got another, we've got another transaction here, a contract before us on real estate on Lot 20 on Goldsboro Neck Road. Mr. Thomas, you want to tell us about that?
Yes, so this is a contract to purchase approximately one acre portion of land from Thomas Coe for the sum of $231,200 for the, the county requires this property for the expansion of Goldsboro Neck Road, which I believe Mr. Clark can speak a little bit more to.
Yeah, Mr. Clark, come on up. I appreciate you hanging out with us tonight.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, again, this is, we're looking at widening Goldsboro Neck Road, and I think as you heard from Shore Health with the hospital, I think this is even more imperative to get the land in order to widen the road so we can support this as well as Airport Road, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but other than this, this is basically so we can provide about 39 feet of pavement on Airport Road along with drainage ditches, improved drainage ditches. This will all happen over on, the widening of this road will happen on the Coe side, or let's say where the Easton, Easton, what was it?
Industry Park.
Commerce Park, yeah, that Commerce Park is, and will not be impacting the residential properties over on the other, on the north side.
That's great.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we got a motion second to move forward with this contract on Goldsboro Neck Road. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
He's laughing over there. What you laughing at?
I'm just wondering if he's participating in some kind of charity event, I mean.
Oh, me? This is all for a Halloween costume, I apologize.
I was looking for your paper bag.
See you, Cassandra.
Wait, wait till Halloween.
It's not no shave November yet.
What's that?
It's not no shave November quite yet.
Well, when my wife said, like, she should grow a beard, I, I said, okay.
I, I actually think it's grown a lot while he's been sitting here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're getting there, we're getting there.
Something has to be up.
All right, thanks a lot, Ray, I appreciate your good work doing that. I know that was a lot of work doing that, so I appreciate that. Okay, all right, county manager report.
Yes, good evening, council. Under county manager report this evening, I only have two items under board and committee appointments. The first one is for the Agricultural Land Preservation Advisory Board, requesting the appointment of Jeannie George of Cordova to that board.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to Mrs. George, put her on the committee. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And then the next item, it gives me great pleasure to recommend to you that under the Social Services Board of Directors, DSS, is requesting the appointment of Andrew Hollis to be a member of that board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Are you questioning that, Mr. President?
Excuse me?
Are you, are you, are you questioning that?
Yeah, well, I wonder, I'm sure Andy's watching, you know, he, he knows he is. Now, we're, we're really tickled to have him back here, that's for sure. He's really a huge part of the community, community, and I'm glad he's there, and appreciate it, really honestly appreciate everything he does, and he's done everything for the county, so. Madam Secretary, we've got a motion second to put Mr. Hollis in that nice seat for him. Can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, complete your county manager report for the night.
Okay, good job, I appreciate it. Okay, next up is public comment. We've got anybody out there? Lynn? Okay, all right, nobody? Okay, council comments. Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Price?
I don't have any comments this evening. Actually, no, let me, let me, let me, let me change that. I have watched the majority of the last two new county council candidate forums and found them interesting, and all I want to do is, is send a, a word of advice out to everybody who's running. Keep watching these meetings, go back and watch, go back and watch our previous meetings, and make sure that you know the local issues. I am seeing some, some, some things that are not focused on what we can actually do, and so if there's any more forums coming up or people asking questions, I think it's important. I know a lot of people aren't attending here in person. I appreciate Lynn coming in person most of the time. I assume most of the other candidates are watching, but it's different being here in the room, and I know when I ran 12 years ago for six months, I planted myself out in those very hardwood benches out there. I really encourage all 10 of you to go back and watch the meetings and see the interactions and what we actually have the power to do and what we don't, and while you may have those, you may have those beliefs, and that's good, you have, have to run for a reason, but just make sure that you understand that, and I couldn't, I couldn't keep myself away, I needed, I needed to go see it in person, so it's, it's been interesting. So that's just a word advice to all of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Mr. Pack.
I won't be with you next week, so I don't know whether that's good news or bad, but I won't be with you. I've already left my votes with Mr. Thomas for your consideration, and I'll see you guys later on tomorrow.
Okay, that sounds great.
Mr. DeVio. There has been a lot of discussion in the forums and on different news, well, blogs and things, about trying to charge builders the right fee to make them pay for future development, and I, I would just like to thank the county staff and this county council for hiring Titler to do a study on impact fees, which will be probably the first thing that this new council does. It's scheduled to have a meeting with the council in January, so probably don't need to send it back to the Public Works Advisory Board and Planning Commission to ask them to do a study that we've already spent a couple thousand dollars on doing, but when people ask, you know, why didn't the Planning Commission certify and count how much these developments should be paying, it's not their job. That's why we hire independent agencies that do the calculations and present it to the council, and then the council votes to increase the impact fees, once you know how many lots there are. So, believe it or not, there is a method to the madness. We are moving steps through it, and I appreciate this council for setting up an easy win for the next council when they come in here and have to make the impact fee increase. They'll have the numbers for them in January.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio. Mr. Lusher.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. DeVio, for that. I had the pleasure this week of meeting with Easton Cub Scout Pack or Den of Easton Cub Scout Pack 190, right here in council chambers, and it reminded me of how many volunteers there are in this community who are supporting organizations for youth, who are supporting organizations, organizations generally. The work that is going by, that is done by all these volunteers in all of these organizations to, to nurture and raise our youth is, is a really significant impact. They say it takes a village to raise a child, indeed it does, and we are seeing really good work going on, on that front in this community, thanks to all of you who are doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Lusher, and I'm going to build off that to, the community come together Saturday at the airshow. There was thousands of people there, thousands. Some of the council members went up in the plane, had a good time, you know, it, it just shows you that this council, the community, it just shows how, how, how nice a county and well-run, and Micah and his, and all the volunteers, just, just, really just took dozens and dozens of people to put all that together. They did such a fantastic job, the weather was awesome, so I want to really put my hands out to Micah, his crew, the staff putting all that together, council, all, all of us trying to be there. I know, I don't think you could make it, Mr. Lusher, but, but we'll forgive you, that's okay. So, but anyway, it was great to be part of it, and, and that's really what the community's all about, so I really appreciate it.
Mr. Lusher, you want to go ahead?
Mr. Callahan, were you too scared to go up in the airplane because we were?
No, 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 I was, I was camping this weekend, that's my new hobby.
Okay, but we saw you at the, at the airport day, and then, like, you're not on the airplane.
I know, no, I hopped in my motorhome and, and left.
I just saw you got cold feet, or I, I say, you could have gone chicken because we did the chicken drop.
I know. Julie would have been upset. She would have been upset.
So, Mr. Callahan, would you like to cut this off here?
Yeah, exactly.
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 18th, beginning at 6 o'clock PM, which has been declared a special legislative day. The council will be convening in open session at 5 o'clock PM and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate legal and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
Second.
Got a motion second. Madam Secretary, call the vote.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.